Good afternoon. It's June 3, 2025, and I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Carmel by the Sea City Council to order at 4:30 PM. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Barron?
Here.
Councilmember Booter?
Here.
Mayor Protem Delves?
Here.
Councilmember Jarmo?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
All are present.
Thank you. Would everyone rise? And Administrator Rarick, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'll hand over heart. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move to extraordinary business now, and we begin tonight by recognizing some outstanding members of our community, and we'll keep these brief but meaningful. First is Carmel High School Report Out. Let's welcome our student representative from Carmel High School for a quick report, and thank you for joining us.
I am Juliette Norman, the Carmel High School Associated Student Body President. This is the last week of school. We started the week yesterday with a recognition assembly celebrating student and teacher achievements, followed by some time outside on the green with a climbing wall, bounce houses, and a petting zoo. It was a great way to balance the hard work we are doing to finish strong on our final exams with our excitement about summer vacation. We would like to thank everyone in the community for coming to our events and performances this year in the arts, technology, and sports. Community support means so much for our school spirit. With the community cheering us on, our exciting spring sports season extended into the postseason. On the dive team, Senior Victoria Valdez won the league championship and broke our school record. In track and field, Senior Mac Aldy came in second in the 800-meter race at the CCS Championship and went on to run in the state finals. Softball advanced to PCal, and our baseball team this weekend used an early rally to set the stage for a walk-off CCS Championship win against Willow Glen in extra innings. This is the Padres' ninth section title under baseball coach Mike Kelly. With that win, they advanced to the NorCal Regional Playoffs and are actually playing Round One right now. The game just started at 4 o'clock here at home against Morro Bay. Also playing at the state level as we speak is golfer Julian Cho, who is a junior. He placed third in CCS, shooting two under, and is playing today at Poppy Hills in the state championship. This Friday is graduation. Following the ceremony is Sober Grad Night, where seniors will go by bus to the Santa Cruz Beach Boardwalk for a fun chaperone night to celebrate. The students would like to very much thank the city council for approving a resolution to help fund the Sober Grad Night. The event is entirely paid for by generous donations, making it free to students so that everyone can attend. Thank you for helping to keep kids and the community safe and sober during what is statistically a very vulnerable time. Thank you so much for everything you do for us, and as we have all been writing in each other's yearbooks, have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Carmel is winning 1-0 right now.
Keep us updated. All right, we're going to move to Item B, Pride Month Proclamation. Jeff, could you present the Pride Month Proclamation to us?
Thank you, Dale. I hope you'll let me make a few comments.
Yes.
Try to keep them for less than 20 minutes. Every year, so thank you, this is the seventh year that I've been fortunate enough to be able to do this, and I'm really grateful for the community and for the mayor. Every year I thank someone, and you know, when I turned 61 this year, and you start looking back at your life and what you've done, and feeling a little bit of something. And back in October, I had the opportunity to go talk to the entire student body of York School about my experiences growing up gay in South Carolina and whatnot, and as I was going through, sort of my life, and I'll skip almost all of that here, I got to the 80s when I was in New York, and AIDS was running rampant through the gay community. And I was reminded that, you know, when everybody had turned their backs on gay men that were dying, there was one community that did not, and that was a community of lesbians. It is unbelievable how much support gay men got from lesbians in New York and throughout the country in the 80s and the 90s. And so, as I read this tonight, I'm proud of all the support that I've gotten from the lesbian community through the years, and I don't obviously have any way to repay all that, but know that you're in my hearts. So this is a proclamation of the city council of the City of Carmel by the Sea, recognizing June 2025 as LGBTQ Pride Month. Whereas many cities across the United States recognize June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in commemoration of the Stoneroy riots in June of 1969, and to celebrate the progress that has been made for LGBTQ rights. And whereas continued discrimination against LGBTQ persons make it important for cities to stand up and show solidarity and support for our LGBTQ residents and those in the community at large. And whereas the City of Carmel by the Sea has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, and is committed to celebrating and supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for all people in the community. And whereas the City of Carmel by the Sea has a long and proud history of celebrating diversity, promoting inclusion, and defending civil rights both within our community and outside of our community. And whereas it is of great importance to respect one another and to appreciate our differences, now therefore be proclaimed that I, Dale Byrne, Mayor of the City of Carmel by the Sea, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Carmel, hereby proclaim June 2025 as LGBTQ Pride Month. In witness thereof, I have a here and to set my hand this third day of June 2025 in Carmel by the Sea, California. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you for sharing that. All right, we'll move to C, Nonprofit Spotlight. Next, we're going to talk about a great resource for the peninsula, the Monterey Firefighters' Community Foundation. Their executive community outreach director, Matt Murphy, is here tonight to educate us about their mission, what they do to enhance our community, and their annual firefighters' charity ball, I would imagine. Matt?
Thank you. Hello, Honorable Mayor, council members, and Carmel by the Sea residents. My name is Matt Murphy, and I'm the community outreach director of the Monterey Firefighters' Community Foundation. Thank you for this opportunity to highlight our foundation and the impact we have on our community. The Monterey Firefighters' Community Foundation, or MFCC, mission is to protect and strengthen our communities through continued stewardship, education, and outreach. The MFCC was started in 2020 by the men and women of the Monterey Firefighters' Association, IAFF, Local 3707. Our labor group proudly serves the communities of Carmel by the Sea, Monterey, Pacific Grove, Sand City, Naval Postgraduate School, La Mesa Village, and the Monterey Regional Airport. As some of you may know, firefighters are a very diverse group. We come from different backgrounds, communities, social, economic statuses, religious, and cultural backgrounds. But there's one thing that all firefighters have in common, and that's a passion for servitude. Our passion for servitude doesn't stop when we end our shift, and we walk away from our shift, and we wanted to be able to continue to serve our community while off duty. And so the Monterey Firefighters' Community Foundation was born. The MFCC hosts numerous free community events, as well as resources for first responders and their families, resources and donations to our communities, and other local charities and fundraisers for our foundation. Our free events include our annual Kids Hero Run, Kids Firefighter Challenge, Movie in the Park, Holiday Toy Drive, and Wrapping Party, and free hot chocolate at First Night Monterey Event. Our first responder resources include a mental health workshop for first responders and donations to widows and orphans of fallen first responders. Our community resources and donations include a defensible space grant program to help disabled, elderly, and low-income families mitigate the wildfire risk to their properties, as well as donations to local youth sports leagues and youth sports programs, and auction items to other local charities and fundraisers. Our fundraisers every year include our annual, excuse me, Fourth of July Pancake Breakfast at Fire Station 11, where we split the proceeds with my museum, and our annual firefighters' charity ball being held this year at the, excuse me, at the Inn at Spanish Bay on October As your local first responders, no matter the emergency, we will be there for our communities. We envision our foundation in the same way. If there is a way to benefit our communities, we want to be there. We are limited only by our resources, and it's through your support, donations, and sponsorships that we are able to impact our communities in a meaningful way. If you would like to become a sponsor of our foundation or get involved, please reach out to me at matt@montereyfirefighterfoundation.org, and donations can be made through our website at www.montereyfirefighterfoundation.org, or by reaching out to me as well. You can also follow us for latest up-to-date information on events and everything on Instagram Thank you guys for your support.
Moving on to D, we'll receive an information report on the City of Carmel by the Sea vacancies pursuant to Government Code Section 3502.3, AB 2561, and this is something I had to do at the Regen Board Meeting last time, and it's good to see you doing it.
Well, good evening, Mayor Byrne, Council. This presentation on the city's vacancy recruitment and retention efforts is in compliance with Assembly Bill 2561. What is Assembly Bill 2561? It was effective January 1 of this year, and it was intended to address high vacancy rates in public agencies through California that were very prevalent over the last couple of years. It requires public employers to disclose the status of vacancies, recruitment, and retention efforts before the budget adoption. It was intended to foster transparency regarding the number of vacancies in public agencies, how the city conducts recruitment, and its retention efforts. There are additional obligations if vacancy rates are higher than 20% in a particular bargaining unit. That is not the case with City of Carmel. Our vacancy rate is below 10%, as you'll see in the next couple of slides. This is just a general workforce information. We have 96 budgeted full-time positions, and that's the breakdown of these 96 positions. 66 of them are represented, and so for the purpose of this presentation and our legal requirements, these are the ones we'll be discussing tonight. This is vacancy information by bargaining units. So the makeup of these, I forgot to update the 68 to 66. It's only 66. There's the general unit, the management unit, and the Police Officers Association. I'll get into the details of these six vacancies, but three of them just occurred over the last 30 days. Otherwise, we would have only had three vacancies. The general unit, one of them is a maintenance worker position that was a recent resignation, and it's already in active recruitment. The other two are the assistant city forester and the tree permit technician. Those two positions we had held off for the arrival of our new Public Works Director, and we were going to wait for him to review operations and determine how to best fill these two positions. The management unit, that vacancy is a planning position that is, the recruitment just closed a couple of weeks ago, so it's currently in review. Just so council understands how sometimes these recruitments work, there was 87 applications for this one position. So when there's an overwhelming response, it takes us a little bit longer to get through them and schedule interviews. On the Police Officers Association, those two vacancies are police services officers or dispatchers. These also just became, or just opened up through an internal promotion and a recent retirement. There is a parking enforcement position that's not listed there because it's considered filled, and that one starts July 1. So we will start recruitment on all these vacancies in the coming weeks and months. Some of them are already open, and we expect completion on them by the end of summer 2025, or this summer. On our recruitments, we continuously review our hiring process to seek improvements. Some of these enhancements that we've made is working closely with our hiring managers to determine what their needs are, and also working with our external recruiting consultant to help us post these jobs and do targeted job ads on professional associations. This has allowed us to do a faster application review, quicker interview scheduling, and more efficient conditional offers and background process. On the retention efforts, the city's salary and benefit alignments with market median in recent years has allowed us to be more competitive and reduce turnover. So as a result of all this, we successfully hired 22 new employees over the last 12 months. So six vacancies don't represent a major challenge for us. But we'll continue to review and our policies, refine our process with the goal of maintaining a high-quality workforce. So that's the end of the presentation. There is no action required from council. We're just simply fulfilling our legal requirements under this law. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Thanks for the great job that you do for us. Okay, we're now going to move to public appearances. And Nova, could you read the public appearance notice?
At this time, members of the public are entitled to speak on matters of municipal concern that are not on tonight's agenda. Each person's comments shall be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the chair. For all public comments, persons are not required to provide their names. However, it is helpful for speakers to state their names so they may be identified in the minutes of the meeting. Under the Brown Act, public comment for matters on the agenda must relate to that agenda item, and public comments for matters not on the agenda must relate to the subject matter jurisdiction of this legislative body. If a member of the public attending the meeting in person or remotely violates the Brown Act by failing to comply with these requirements of the Brown Act, then that speaker will be muted.
Thank you, Nova. How many people plan on making a comment tonight, today? All right. So if you could, as the speakers finish, if you could come up and line up behind them, it would be good to save us some time. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is John Jarmelo, and I live near the Forest Hill Park tennis courts. Our neighborhood coalition of 47 Carmel by the Sea residents are requesting that a municipal code be created prohibiting pickleball from being played on the tennis courts. The constant noise generated by pickleball is intolerable, and according to acoustic experts, as loud as the shooting of rifle. The pickleball noise can actually be heard blocks away inside our homes. Having peace and quiet inside our homes, free of noise pollution, is a human right. We're asking the city council to address this constant noise issue promptly by adding this topic to the July agenda in order to create a municipal code prohibiting pickleball on the tennis courts. This municipal code would be similar to the municipal code that prohibits beach fires and the resulting air pollution. Thank you for your help on behalf of Carmel residents in Carmel by the Sea and the Forest Hill Park neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Nancy Toomey here. I would like to reciprocate the extremely gracious appreciation that Brandon Swanson extended to the AHA Citizens Team for their efforts to draft, edit, and polish the draft of the Housing Element Amendment to the Regional HCD Director for their first round of approval. Both Brandon, Marnie, and now adding Anna into the team, they have all gone above and beyond in this effort, working with all of us crazy citizens to collaborate to achieve this deliverable, and I wanted to extend thank you, thank you, and thank you.
I agree with that, Nancy. Not the part about the crazy citizens, but everything else.
We're all crazy, come on. It's part of a tradition in the town. Wanted to say remark about last night, I think it's great that we are continuing to scratch our head at the parking issue, as the chief captured last night. It's been going on at least since 1938. I also wanted to just restate here again that I really hope that we do not fold in the Forest Theater as part of that solution. Eighth Avenue is also problematic because between Mountain View and Santa Fe, it's a single lane. And so if you want to get a car, if two cars are approaching each other from opposite directions, one of the cars needs to pull over. You know, Councilmember Barron said last night that Mountain View is also similarly problematic. And also, you know, the Forest Theater is really the cultural centerpiece of our village established there in 1910. We really need to keep that as a performing arts center and not as an overflow parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Ryan Herron. I am the Launa Union Representative for the city employees here. Our union represents both the general unit and the management unit, and we came here tonight just to follow up on the report that Marissa just gave. You know, that report is part and parcel of a brand-new law that was enacted, added to the bargaining law, and you know, ostensibly, it was most likely added as an opportunity for unions to come before the city council and complain, right? And say, you know, here's things that the city needs to do better, management needs to do better in order to recruit and retain workers. But you know, I'm pleased to report to you all here that, you know, we're not here to complain tonight. We're here really to commend, you know, both management and the council. You know, we're very excited to hear that there's going to be recruitments that are coming down the pipe here for some of the vacant positions that have remained vacant while we waited to fill the Public Works Director position. We're excited to get those recruited and filled. HR and management have done a great job of filling those quickly. You know, we're excited to see the maintenance worker position that's being recruited right now. And you know, we want to commend the city and the council for doing what it takes to keep the city here competitive and able to recruit and retain the best workers, and you know, we're thankful for our collaborative and cooperative relationship that we've been able to maintain with the city, and we look forward to keeping it going here for the years ahead. So, thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to come and thank us tonight.
Oh, and also, I'm not going to be able to stay through the whole meeting, but there's an item on the end of the agenda tonight about parental, paid parental leave. We are also very supportive and excited about that as well, and hope to see that go through. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Some of you may recognize me. My name's Sullivan Carey Lang. I am a city employee of almost 12 years. I'm also the lead for our general unit Launa negotiation team. So I just want to take a moment to introduce myself in that capacity to those that may not know me, and echo Ryan's comments, thankful for continuing work on this for recruitment, and we look forward to working with you more in the future.
Thank you, Sullivan.
And in the same vein, I am Marnie Waffle, Principal Planner. I've been here for eight years, and I volunteer as a representative for the management unit here at the city. I also sit on the executive board for Local 792, and just want to express my thanks to the council for considering the parental leave. That's later on the agenda, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Marnie.
Afternoon, Council, Mr. Mayor, Ken White. Going to give you an update on something that I hope you'll get excited about, you've heard about already, that's the bridge to everywhere. And let me start by saying Fort Worth is well-known as the place to go to hike or walk. It is Carmel, although you see a lot of residents, but it is the place to hike. We've got a program going that we really think could help Carmel immensely. That is the trail, hiking or walking trail that would start at the foot of Ocean, go the perimeter of your boundaries and around, up the Mission Trail Park, and ends at the bridge. You come across the bridge at the end, go down past the Forest Theater, and then you have to walk down Ocean Avenue to get to your car. Hikers like to do something with their mouth and their stomach at the end of long hikes. And they're pretty traditionally, they go to coffee, tea, or they have a light lunch. So I think we're missing a bit there, and it gets a new type of visitor to our city that's healthy and is active. We're building a coalition I want you to know about. Now, that's groups of different groups. We did presentations to the Residents Association and the Carmel Rotary, got very positive feedback. The Wastewater District is sponsoring and funding the program. We are also in the Coalition Coastal Conservancy, and they're looking at funding some of the program. Enthusiastically received by Regional Park District, and they're excited about extending the trail across the river to Point Lobos and down to Mid Valley to the park. Parents of school in Mission Fields seem to have taken an interest because they don't want their children walking down railroad on and out. So a lot of them are walking their children to school, at the river school. I don't know if you know that, but that is a concern from theirs. So our coalition is doing pretty well. You're part of the coalition, and so what I'm hoping is that we could get some movement as pretty good as soon as we can on the issue of the agreement, the use of the old Hodges Stables or the Rio Park as it's called now. We get that agreement signed, we can move forward much more aggressively. So if you take it under your consideration sometime, give the city administrator a little nudge, and the city attorney, and see if we can't get that agreement done sooner than what it looks like we're headed toward. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. My name is Donna Jett, and I'm here to thank Commander Todd and Police Chief Paul for the Pancake Breakfast. It was a community event, and the VIPS helped and CERT helped, and nothing could get done without Public Works. They are behind-the-scenes people, and all the local volunteers. And I applaud all these types of community activities that we collaborate together with all the nonprofits. So I just wanted to say thank you. No complaints, just thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Good afternoon. I'm sorry I couldn't attend last night in person, but I was driving back from Southern California. You know, I moved here over 30 years ago from that vast wasteland that is known as the Inland Empire, and I want to tell you how much more I appreciate Carmel every time I make that visit back. It is just a lot more civilized here. I would like to thank you for the discussion last night about parking. I didn't catch all of it, but a little of it. What I didn't hear was how this could be a great source of revenue, which I think we all need, especially when we look at our budget. And revenue has to be part of it. People expect to pay for parking these days. I also am concerned the size of cars now are so much bigger that it is becoming a lot more dangerous downtown. And I really always felt as a councilperson, and I hope you do too, that health and safety is the premier issue that you have to provide by government. So I hope that you will not always blame 413 for this. This is not 413. 413 is about making pedestrians safe. We also have an obligation under Vision Zero that Tamsi is working on to make our community as safe as possible. Pedestrian deaths have been up exponentially over the last many years, so this is something good. I also want to repeat what I said last night, that see Monterey and visit Carmel are doing exactly what they were hired to do, to bring visitors here. It is our job as residents, it is your job as councilpeople to come It is our job as residents, it is your job as councilpeople to come up with a parking management plan that manages the people that are invited to come here and enjoy. And I think it would be ever more enjoyable if traffic slowed down. One of the things that came up at the Tamsi meeting was perhaps a sign when you enter Carmel by the sea saying, "We enforce our 25 mile per hour limit." And something about, "Remember, we don't have sidewalks. We have people walking in the street." So I think that's extremely, extremely important to do whatever we can to make our city as safe as possible and to also raise some revenue so that we can have the nice things that we want and repair the things that need repaired. So thank you very much. And I also want to echo what Ken White just said. This is a fabulous project that could bring health and enjoyment to our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. Anyone else here in the chambers?
Try to cover four months of work in three minutes. I first like to apologize to Jeff and to Alessandra not giving them the time that we spent with other people and other groups about, you know, the parking things that we were talking about last night. I would like to apologize for that. Secondly, I appreciate the council we have now. It's definitely a great doer council, and I do appreciate you guys on a lot of things that you've done already. It was very similar to when Mayor, oh, it's Connor Redding, Mayor White was, we worked on some projects back in the 80s, and it was kind of very interesting what was done during that period of time. There hasn't been a lot of councils since, but this one definitely echoes that. I'd also like to tell you about my conversation with my brother last night. My, it actually was on Sunday. I called my brother, hadn't spoken for a while. He lives in Canada. And he asked me about halfway through the conversation, you know, when was I going to be finished with him? And I told him that when I find a parking space. So I was driving around town, 32 minutes total trying to find a space. I found one about four blocks away from the restaurant. And then when I walked into the restaurant, there was three or four tables that only had one person sitting in it, and they had seven, five, six, and seven people total. Most restaurants wouldn't let them sit down until all the people arrived, but we don't do that. We think it's ridiculous to be waiting outside. So we let them sit down, but it took them a lot of time for them to have the whole parties come because they were looking for parking. I'm out there seven days a week, walking and talking to people. People are approaching me. I ask them what's their challenges, and parking comes up all the time. And, you know, what can I tell you? That's why we're working on it. Three months we worked on it, you know, Andrew, Hector, and I, and some other people, and it's been very rewarding. Most of the issues and considerations that we were dealing with last night were accurate, but they are, have been dealt with. And they are, we have, we have, we can substantiate a lot of the things that were talked about, including the valet, you know, the striping, all that stuff. We have information. We've spent a lot of times where we've been on our knees measuring situations, and we'd like to address it, not right now, of course. And we need to be on the agenda, right? So, we will at some point in time, or as a group. I think we're getting together as a group. I did have something else that I wanted to say. And I think I've said it. So thank you for letting me have the opportunity.
Thanks, Ken.
I just want to quickly echo Ken's comments, you know. Thank you for the council, everybody else that, you know, provided discussion last night. I think, you know, the parking thing is a big deal, and you guys are making it a priority. Shows you care about, you know, the problems of this town. So just thank you again. Appreciate the effort.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Last chance. All right. We're going to move on to announcements. We're first going to do the city administrator announcements. Chip, do you have any?
Yes, just real quickly, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I too wanted to echo the thanks to Commander Treyor, who's in the back, and the chief, and the VIPS, and our CERT volunteers, and all the officers who helped out at the Pancake Breakfast. I walked in a little bit late. It was like 9:38, and the building was packed. This was at the youth center. So well done. Thank you so much. The commander did a great job talking to the, talking to the residents that were there. So that was really well done. And then in the same vein, we have our own Bob Gotch, who is the most veteran volunteer in police services. Bob received his 15-year volunteer pin on, was it Saturday? I guess it was Saturday. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your service. And then just, I know we don't-
10 years, 1,500 hours.
I apologize. 10 years, 1,500 hours. There's a 15 in there somewhere. Even though we're doing the budget tonight, it's, thank you, sir, for your service. We appreciate you. And then lastly, based on the direction that we received from council, I think two weeks ago, Mr. Pirik and I are working on, it's a lease for Rio Park with COD, so we're working on that. And we do agenda review next Tuesday at 11 with Mr. Delves and the mayor and several members of our team. And we tentatively have an open session discussion about the COD lease for Rio Park on the agenda for July. So that's what I got, sir.
Thank you. City Attorney, Brian, do you have anything?
No announcements today.
One of these days, you're going to have to have an announcement.
I don't know that you want one.
Seems like everybody's bringing us good news tonight, so good news would be welcome. All right, we're going to go to council members now. Jeff, why don't you start off?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank the Environmental Section of Public Works for a number of events that we did a couple of weeks ago. Mary, Bill C., and Val Gano. I see Mary. I don't see Val here. Val, thank you. On May the 15th, we had a community workshop here in this, in this room on the sea level rise adaptation efforts by the city. That work is being put on with the help of our partners, Integral Consulting, and is funded by that $500,000 Coastal Commission grant that we got last year. That was a great, a great workshop with probably 20 community members in attendance. Very well-run, asked the right questions. So thank you, thank you so much for that. On May the 22nd, we had a Tamsi-sponsored Vision Zero community workshop on roadway, on roadway safety. It's about reducing the number of, reducing the number of serious roadway, serious accidents and deaths to zero and, and stuff like that. Also well-attended. And then, most interestingly, on May the, on May the 23rd, the city staff, including Mary and Val, and Ken was there, and Chip was there, and I was there, we gave a presentation to the ECHO, the NASA ECHO Summer School on our, on our village's climate adaptation efforts. And it was a very professional, very professional, well-done, 45-minute presentation followed by question and answer. And the ECHO, the NASA ECHO School, you know, it turns out, and I don't think any of us really knew what we were getting into when we sort of agreed to do this, it turns out that there were 40 people in the room, probably 40 of the top climate and oceanographic scientists from around the world, two-thirds of them from outside of the country. And ECHO stands for estimating circulation and climate of the ocean. So we were invited, we were invited to show up early. And the previous, the previous presentation was an hour of oceanographic currents. And when I walked in and I was talking to Ian, there was a slide of, two slides of differential equations on the board that I don't think any of us understood. So that's how serious it was. These scientists were really interested in hearing about this community's efforts, and I think we were really well-received. We got a bunch of good questions, and staff did us, staff to us very proud. So thank you so much.
I wanted to pile on a little bit with the thank yous for the police event. I thought it was a fantastic event, you know, showed up with my family. It was a full house. I got there right at nine, and, you know, I was like, Megan, we need to go to, you know, get some bodies in the room. And walked in, and the place was full for a first-time event. I think that's, that's huge. And so, you know, wanted to thank the VIPS and CERT. Also, the former owners of Forge in the Forest, Greg and Caroline Profeta. I was wondering how you guys were making such amazing-looking pancakes, and it turns out you had some professionals back there. So thank you to them. And then also to Commander Treyor, you know, he conceived of and spearheaded, you know, the concept. And it turns out, I did some digging, and he actually bought most of the food personally. So I wanted to just give Commander Treyor a quick round of applause. Also quickly pile on with, with Bob Gotch, you know, 1,500 hours, really amazing service to the community. So thank you for that, Bob. You know, I first became aware of Bob. I didn't meet Bob until later, but he used to always walk by my house. And he always, he always had a stick in his hand, and it turned out that he goes around and on his walks, he just picks up things that are in the road. And so that's just the kind of guy he is. So, so thank you, Bob, again. Really appreciate that. And lastly, I'm going to sort of keep doing this until we get somewhere on it. I just wanted to make a plug for weekend hours at the library, if any of our library employees are out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. I have nothing to add, no announcements. Thank you.
There must be something. It's been a month.
I also enjoyed the Pancake Breakfast. And all the things that Hans just said, and I don't need to say them again.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for going to that. I'll echo that. I was there as well. And to add something that hasn't been said, Commander Treyor called me from Safeway and said, Dale, I understand that you and Margaret choose to be gluten-free, and we do. And he says, what kind of gluten-free pancake mix would you like me to buy? And he did, and they made me gluten-free pancakes. And they're very good. So that was wonderful. I might also pile on to Bob's comment, or the comment about Bob. What he's doing, he's actually a Pickup Posse member, and he has a blue bucket and a picker. And in addition to, to receiving the Golden Picker Award about a year ago, he also is, is one of the only Pickup Posse members who religiously turns in his 10 to 15 hours a month report to me. And I can tell you, he has at least 200 and some hours Pickup Posse. So he's working towards 1,500 hours of Pickup Posse as well. Thank you, Bob. And I'd like to thank everyone who participated in last night's discussion on parking. It really was a healthy exchange of information and opinions, and it did give us direction for some creative solutions that we'll pursue in group settings and bring back ideas to the council. I'm also excited that the Public Works Department will be partnering with Carmel Cares starting next Monday. The first batch of wood is arriving tomorrow to replace the age fence around Devendarf Park with an old-growth redwood fence. And if you want to see a sample, we made one inside the fence right by the bus stop, and I think you'll like what we're going to do. I also would like to thank Public Works and the contractors who have been working to execute the 306090 program, and it's continuing. And as far as I can see, they've, they've removed close to 300 stumps since we announced that. And they're making repairs to many sidewalks and tree wells around town, and the work is continuing every day. I see Bo and Monty all over town. Sometimes I see them in three different places on the same day. And they're, they're repairing things that Margaret and I have been noticing and sending in, and it's really good. So also excited to be hosting the Monterey County's Mayor's Meeting in Carmel this coming Friday. We have a meeting every month, and it's in a different city every month than we finally made this month. Nova arranged for the meeting to be held at Graziings at noon. Thank you for your efforts on that. And while they're not normally noticed, public meetings, they are public meetings. So if anybody wants to come and see what mayors show up and hear the agenda items, you could sit on the side of the room, and you could probably buy your lunch if you want to. We get lunch as part of the event. So that's it for me.
Thanks, Mayor. So last week in the Pinecone, there was an item about a little strip of land just south of the Frank Lloyd Wright House, very small piece of land, and it has development restrictions that it can't be developed upon. And so several people have asked me, why doesn't the city buy it? It's listed at $100,000. And it could be something that the city just maintains and perhaps puts a bench up. It is actually technically part in the county. So I wanted to ask our city attorney, what would the process be? And, and if we could just gauge if this might be something the council would be interested in doing, and I would think time would be of the essence.
Well, the city may purchase property that's outside of the city limits. You know, you need a willing seller and a willing buyer that agree on a price. So that would be the start. And there may, there may be some Surplus Land Act issues that would need to be looked at by whoever owns the property, if it's the county that owns the property. If it's not, is it privately owned? Okay, well, then there wouldn't be a surplus land issue.
So we need this on the agenda for us to discuss and then get the majority and go forward? And like I said, time would be of the essence if this is something that we're interested in doing. But several people have suggested that it would be a smart thing for us to do, and it would also ensure that the land would actually never be developed.
Well, since it's a real estate transaction, you would be able to have a closed session to discuss, and that's typically the way that it is handled because their negotiations are not done in public. However, before the city would actually be able to purchase the property, the purchase agreement would have to come back as an open session item.
So, Mr. Mayor and city administrator, is this something right now that we even like, would want a show of hands if we want to move forward, or just gauge how we're feeling on this?
Can, can we do that if it's on the agenda?
Brian says?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that we leave it where it is right now without the council taking formal action on, because it is not on the agenda. However, I think everyone here has heard what you said, and when the agenda is put together for the next meeting, that can be taken into account.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
There is a, there is an item at the end of the agenda called future agenda items.
So the question would be, in that part of the meeting, can there be a show of support for anything?
There can be a discussion about an item to be added to the future agenda. You wouldn't be able to discuss the merits of it in any detail, but certainly a request could be made at that point by any council member for an item to be added to the future agenda.
Any of us could repeat it to show a sign of support.
Yes, you could indicate that you support the request.
All right, so that's what you can do. Anything else? All right. Okay, we're now going to move on to public hearings. Number one is Resolution 2025053, adopting the fiscal year 2025 to '26 appropriations limit. This is estimated at 10 minutes. Jamie?
We'll see how fast we can go. So this is an annual thing. While we're getting it up, we'll get it started. You have it in your package. We do this annually. It's called the GAN limit because of the founding of this. The state constitution places a limit or a ceiling on the spending that a city and other government entities can do. And they gave us a formula for how to calculate that limit on the spending. And what happens each year is we bring that calculation back with slight adjustments based on the factors that they want us to consider. And one of those, for example, is population. So this year's calculation, what we do is we take the prior year appropriation limit of $42 million, and so appropriation limit, how much you can spend. And then we look at factors that impact that and calculate a new potential spending limit. And the change factor that, that when you use the formula comes out to 1.06. So that's a lift or an increase to the appropriations that we can do for the city this year. So that's the maximum amount we could spend if we wanted to. So this is just a calculation, basically to kind of put a red line in the sand for all the government entities to keep in front of them and in the discussion. Generally, we're not spending anywhere near where that limit is, so we don't run up against it. But we do need to update the calculation each year. So tonight, what we're looking to do is we want to confirm the fact that we did the math and that we used the State Department of Finance factors when we did that. And basically, that's a city population change and the state per capita income numbers. And with that, we come up with an appropriation limit of 45 million. And you have a resolution in the package. We'd just like to adopt that. Any questions?
Any questions, Jeff? Let's start with you. I have a question. So this is operating budget?
So this is annual expenditure limit.
Total. So capital spending?
Yeah.
Operating budget, everything?
Right. So, yes.
So just for the, for the members of the public that are here, what are, what is our number for next year that we're projecting? our number for next year that we're projecting? We're going to cover it in a minute, but since we're on this subject, just so they know where we're at. Just to put everything in context.
Yeah, so our total expenditures for next year are... 39.9.
Okay. So we're 6 million under.
Yes.
Does that include the carryover?
More room than that. What's that?
Does that include the carryover?
No, that's the total amount. So...
Does it include the carryover capex?
So what he's saying is, is that we've already appropriated some this year that won't necessarily be spent. So this is the, it looks at the annual budget for expenditures.
So if we spend all 10 of the capital money?
It does.
We're still, we'll still be under it even if we spent everything that we were supposed to spend last year.
The 39 million mayor is, includes money that's being rolled over to next fiscal year for expenditure. So yes, the answer is yes to your question, sir.
So we'll get it. And if we spend all 39 million, it will be a very good thing, because we'll get a lot done. All right. Thank you, Jamie. Good job. Now, we take it to the public for any comments? Anybody have a comment on Jamie's work? Bring it back for discussion. Jeff, do you want to say anything?
I just have a quick comment on, on the methodology in the staff report. It says, for consistency purposes, staff recommends using this. And I'm not sure that consistency is really the metric we should be using. You know, this income, this limit of $45 million, you know, is a limit on what we can do. And, and it doesn't have anything to do with what our budget is, right? It just goes up or down every year based on whatever it was when it started, however many, whenever the GAN limit was instantiated. And I think that we should make, you know, I think that in the future, we should make an effort to raise the GAN limit by as much as we can. Like, it doesn't serve any purpose other than to limit what we can do. And I don't know that, you know, I don't know that 6.44% and the negative 0.23% works necessarily in our favor. This year, it doesn't matter, but I think next year, we should start screwing around with those two factors to increase the GAN limit as much as we can.
Why don't we do both calcu... I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Why don't we do both calculations next year, and you can, you can choose?
Okay.
Good point, Jeff. Depends on what the reserve limit said and so on. Anybody else? Nope. All right. Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025-2026 appropriations limit of 45,818,000.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Delphs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jermoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I think that was pretty close to 10 minutes. Number two, Resolution 2025-052, adopting the fiscal year 2025-26 annual operating and capital budget. This is a big one. Jamie's done a lot of work on this, and so has the entire council and lots of other people. So we're anxious to hear this.
It's a team effort, and everybody's been really awesome to work with on this. So what we're here tonight with is the, the budget. Give you a brief discussion of how we got here in the last couple steps. We started talking about this in March. We did some preliminary numbers for you at the beginning of May. We had a workshop on May 21. Since that time, we made some changes. We removed a few capital projects from the list. We reduced a few capital projects. We're coming back tonight also with a prioritization on the capital projects to have some more discussion on that. And we've also brought in some additional answers to questions that were submitted. So tonight, we're looking for an approval of the budget. If it's approved, you can, you can amend the budget at any time, including as early as next meeting. If it's not approved, then we'll have to have a special meeting to go through it in more detail and keep going on that approval process. So what do we got? The, based on the council's preliminary feedback in May, a few changes have been put together. They resulted in a proposed budget, which the city will be using 4.9 million of fund balance to cover expenditures if we approve all of the CIP. The total proposed operating cost of 32 million are about 91.6% of revenue, so we're a little bit over our goal of 90% of revenue for operating costs. Total proposed CIP expenditure of 7.8 are 23% of budgeted revenues. So we're about 4.9 in excess of our minimum threshold for what we'd want to spend on that. So again, the whole thing hinges on revenue, 34.5, 34.9 million, a little bit, a little bit over on the operating expenses, significantly over on the CIP expenditures. Revenue. So at a glance, the top three revenue sources, sales tax, property tax, transient occupancy tax, are 82% of the total revenues. And we get that sales tax through both the statewide thing that's called Bradley Burns and the Measure C that was locally approved. Those three legs of the stool are what hold up general operations for the city and also fund all the CIP needs. The remainder of the revenues are charges for services and other revenues, which includes small, special purpose taxes, business licenses, franchise tax, and the like. So revenues haven't changed too much, and we talked about originally, we're trying to be really realistic in our revenue numbers in our forecast this year. In prior years, we've been a little bit more conservative. Expenditures at a glance, we see that salaries and benefits is the largest expenditure the city makes, constituting 38% of the city's budget. Outside services is also significant at 27%, the majority of that being the fire and the ambulance. So if you were to put those together as a in-house staffed, your salary numbers would be even larger as a percentage of the total budget. So those direct people providing services is our main focus. When we look at it by function or department, division, we see that capital project is the city's number one expenditure at 21% of all the operating expenditures were put on the budget this year. Looking at the departments, Public Works and Police come in number one and number two. Citywide comes in number three, but it includes the unfunded pension contribution for the coming year of about 2.7 million. So most of citywide is that big fat outgoing catch-up check. So that's expenditures. Looking in more detail at staffing, I like the graph on the left, just looking at the last seven years. We can see there was a slight drop in staffing in 1920. That was quickly restored and has been fairly steady over the last few years. This year goes down slightly because we're budgeting for the ambulance staff to potentially move off of our payroll list. So that's why we have that increase in other contractual services. Staffing at a glance. So briefly touched on it, we've got some new policies that are helping to see, are we on track with how we're building the budget? One of the things we wanted to do is talk about operating expenditures, excluding CIP, everything else. Make sure those do not exceed more than 90% of the revenue that we've budgeted to come in. Right now, we budgeted for 34.9 in revenue. The expenditures in the budget are 31.9. That's 91.64%. That's more than 90%. So we are not meeting this budget guideline. We're, our budget's got an extra 572,000. Our, our policy also states that the balanced budget should be in place. So what we've got is 34.9 million in revenues, 31.9 in expenditures for operating expenditures. That would be fine. But then we're piling on 7.9 on the CIP and our catch-up and our investment mode. We're going to use fund balance to do that. So that means we are not balanced on our budget, because we're going into fund balance a bit. So speaking of fund balance, this table shows us a detail of the forecasted fund balances at the end of the budget year. The total of fund balance is made up of many types of governmental funds. The type of fund dictates how flexible the city is as far as what it can do with that money. So I think it's a little bit easier to look at it in terms of this slightly color-coded, although... So what we have in here is we have about 28,000 of prepaid items. They don't exist as cash in the bank anymore. You can't do anything with it. We have 7.8 million of restricted funds. The majority of those restricted funds are the 115 trust, which is restricted for use to pay pension liabilities, and that's it. And the library, which is restricted for library operations. So that's, that's pretty much what the restricted funds are on the 7.8. The next two lines would be colored yellow on your handout. They are committed and assigned. Committed and assigned means the city council has set some rules in place about those monies and what can be done with them. If we follow the rules, at the end of this year, we'll have 19.8 set aside. And one of those set asides is a reserve for the capital projects that are in process. So not finished yet, they were previously approved. That's in there. The rest of that is the policy of holding a reserve for unexpected or contingencies. Some people call it a rainy day fund, and that's about 16 million of that assigned. Then 7.8 million is what's left after that, after that conservative reserve. So that's, that's basically a look at operations, revenue, and that gets us to kind of a balancing spot as far as our reserves. But if we keep going forward, then we are talking about capital projects. And capital projects of 7.8 million, this is in addition to the 3.9 that we're going to be carrying into this year and doing. So if you take the 3.9 we haven't finished yet, and you put 7.8 on top of it, we'll actually be spending up to 11.4 million on CIP in the current year. Number one on this year's list is Forest and Beach spending of 2.4 million, which climbs to 3 million when you combine it with the carryover. Number two on this year's list is facilities for 1.7 million, which combines to 2.2 when we add the carryover in. And number three on the list is streets. This year's budgeted for 1.1, but when you combine it with the carryover, that makes it our largest expenditure at 3.8 million. So I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that we have that additional money that's in play and getting spent. Our policy states that expenditures for CIP shall be a minimum of 10% of our revenue. So 34.9 is revenue. Budget expenditures are 7.8. Our budget is 22.4% of revenues, so we're spending an extra 4.3. We're in compliance with that policy. One of the things we brought into the meeting at the last, the last meeting is just to kind of put CIP out in front of us, because we haven't really had time yet with all the changes, to have a big discussion on the five-year plan. So we just want to bring out and highlight for you. Right now, we've got 7.8 million in the year one budget column. That's what our budget is tonight. But what we haven't really brought in, talked about in detail, is the five-year CIP. So we got potentially, what we put on our to-do list in detail, 8.8 million, 5.7 million, 2.8 million for the next couple of years. What we know also needs to go on the list is infrastructure, unidentified and unquantified facility needs and repairs, that kind of stuff. And we have a really broad range of estimates for that. So that's why we've kind of been leaving it off the list. We haven't quantified it. Those estimates for infrastructure and other repairs is somewhere in the 33 to 60 million dollar range. If we were to kind of put ourselves down the middle of the road on that and say we'd like to do it over the next 10 years, that's a 4.6 million additional spend. And so what that would mean is, is our total potential need is 7.8 this year, 13 next year, 10 the next year, 7 the next year, 5 the year after that. So there's a little bit of uncertainty as we work through and identify and make good fiscal plans for our CIP. And so we just kind of want to talk about that as we look at fund balance. So this, at the end of this year, after the CIP project list, we're ending at 7.8 million dollars in available fund balance, after we set all our reserves aside for that rainy day. If, and then what we're going to do after that is we're going to spend at least 10% of our revenue on CIP. That would be roughly 3.4 million a year. If we look at that, we say we've got 3.4 million to spend each year, and our spending potential need is somewhere around 13 million, 10 million, 7 million, 5 million, then we could potentially be looking at spending that reserve pretty quickly. So as a matter of fact, if it was 13 million in year two, we'd get to a negative ending fund balance and are available of 2 million. And then if we kept that going, be negative 9, negative 13, negative 14. So just to kind of highlight, because we haven't had a chance to bring that all to you, but we're, we're looking at those numbers and trying to analyze them and bring them forward. So with that in mind, we wanted to bring back to you one more quick look at CIP. And I think Brandon has got a simple way to talk about a complex slide.
Thanks, Jamie. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to talk pretty briefly about this. Sort of the theme of this year's budget has been a year of new approaches and refinement of the budget process. You know, in response to the budget workshop that we had recently with you, some of the comments we had from the council and some of the questions from the community, we wanted to bring back this conversation one more time. What you have here is a list of all the capital projects that are in, in your budget right now. The items that are highlighted orange are items that could potentially be deferred. We did go through the exercise with our new Public Works Director and the Public Works team of the urgency and importance test that we talked about with you, that you shared with us. Every item on this list is no doubt important, like that's not, that's not a question here. But we did take a stab at some urgency issues, giving you options. You know, we've talked throughout this process about options and menus and things like that. So that's what you have here, are some options to look at, things that could potentially be deferred to the next fiscal year. Again, these are options. One of your options is to do nothing, leave it how you left it at the workshop. All these items will stay on, none of the CIP numbers will change. Another option would be to, to take the options, as you can see, like, for example, one of the options at the bottom of the list, the objective design guidelines, we talked about that currently in the budget, it's a $200,000 line item. We think that we could get done what needs to be done for 100,000. So you could, you could direct us tonight to make that change, and that, that takes $100,000 out of the overall CIP. That's how that list works. Again, it's meant to be a menu for you. So the second option would be, you could take all the options that we've suggested. A third option would be, you know, pick, pick the ones that you want or don't want. So this is just meant to be a conversation starter. Again, we wanted to highlight for you the stuff that we, as staff, felt that if council was inclined to look back at this list, these are the things we believe are not as urgent as the others. Doesn't mean they're not important. Everything on here is important. So thank you for that. We'd appreciate that feedback at the end of this meeting, what you're doing, your discussions.
And with that, we're at the end of the primary set of slides. Talked about revenue, talked about operating expenses, talked about CIP, and, and policy and policy exceptions. So kind of any questions at this point?
Questions? You want to start, Jeff?
No questions.
Hans?
Can you go back to kind of the main slide that shows the 39.9?
Oop, that one?
Back a little bit more, that kind of the, just the highest level budget summary?
It's like your first slide.
I think so, yeah. Right, there's one.
So on this, like, I don't see the carryover capex on this. So is it 39.8 plus the 3.8? Does that get us to like the total amount that's projected to go out the door this year?
So what we could do is we can talk about the carryover. So what happens is, is we put it as an expense in the current year budget. And then if we don't get it done, then it didn't get spent this year. We have a little extra fund balance, and then it gets spent next year. What this budget is doing is it's presenting the total amount of this year's budget on its own standalone, because we are not sure how much is going to be carried over, and it was already approved in this year. So this is this concept where we don't cancel the CIPs as of June 30. We let them stay on the books until they finish. When it, when it goes out the door next year, that will be additional money spent next year. What we did when we looked at this, because that's pretty hard to explain, is we said all the assumptions in here assume we will probably carry out some unfinished projects at the end of next year also. We just can't tell for sure how much. So we're assuming a stable amount that's carried in is carried out. And that allows us to talk about just the additional total picture of this year. That was still pretty complex.
I think what I'm driving at is relative to the, the GAN limit. Like, if we actually spent the 39.8 and we did the carryover projects, and we had nothing to carry over to the following year, it would be 39.8 plus 3.8. Would that be, would that 43 and change million dollars be our number relative to the GAN limit if that scenario played out?
So... So. There's, there's a little bit more to it than, in the GAN limit than what we had talked about. So the, it's about appropriations. The appropriation capacity that we have over the, it has to do with how much revenue you have and then how you can appropriate. We have about 15 million dollars worth of room. So it's a little bit more than just looking at that expenditure number. So yes, we'd be fine.
You're fine.
We're still in the limit, even with that carryover.
Okay.
Can you go to the fund balance slide, the more complex one? That one, no, back, 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 that one. So I, I think you just said it, that I, I understand all of these. The one that surprises me each time is the second from the bottom, capital projects. I think what I heard you say is that is capital projects carryover. And you should probably label it as such. And a part of that is because we used to have a capital projects reserve.
Correct.
And we got rid of that. But if you didn't know we got rid of it, you would think, so that's what this is. And we got rid of it for the public benefit because we basically just said, we're going to have one big reserve of 50% at this point, instead of having lots of little reserves. Just, it seemed like a, an easier way to go at reserves. And so for the audited balance of June, sorry, estimated fund balance, June 26. Got it. So. So the, the fund balance of June 2025 is not audited.
Correct.
Right. Even though it says, it says audited, it's, that's projected, that's even still projected at this point.
It is projected.
And I know why it's set audit, but it's projected. And then you are assuming that we will be carrying over at the end of this coming year, of '25, '26, exactly the same amount. And you're doing that just because you don't have any better data, but you're pretty sure we're going to carry something over.
Exactly right.
Right.
Yeah.
And so just for future conversation, we're, as we, as we've done in previous years, approving a capital budget that we expect to accomplish about 70% of.
Potentially. And, and you know, I think the example would be, we've got a big paving project that goes on starting in June and goes through August. So are we going to do that same kind of seasonal mid-year thing? Potentially so. And that would be the, that would be the logic behind the expecting there to be a carryover.
Okay.
Plus one or two that maybe run into slowness.
Okay. You've made a lot of progress with this slide.
There's still a lot of numbers.
Yeah. Thank you.
You could also say that we're going to do 100% of what we budgeted, just some of it was last year's number. So if we actually did that much, it would probably be a really good thing. You know, that would be what, 12 million or something? So let's hope that's true. So can we, do you want to stick with this level?
I've got two questions. Thanks, Mayor. Just real quick, and don't want to put you on the spot, or actually Chip, but just when we do our mid-year budget review at the start of next year, historically, just ballpark figure, we usually add about a extra million dollars. Is that pretty safe to say?
So one of the things that we kind of brought out in, in the, from the beginning in this year's cycle is, what you're saying is, you know, about mid-year, we usually go, boy, revenue's doing better than we expected. We have some more room. I think that's what you're saying. And.
Or, or more spending.
Or more spending.
Yeah.
So in this year, we're budgeting without leaving a lot of extra room on the table when it comes to revenue. And so what that means is, we're going to have to be watching this very closely. So one of the things we're doing in the background, probably going to get that monthly budget versus actually going at the departmental level, because we're going to have to watch closely. We're not going to come in and just go, oh yeah, I didn't tell you about it, here's another million. This is, this is a much more aggressive on the estimating side for revenues. And so, and it's tight budget.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Can I just reinforce that, please, ma'am? Yeah, I mean, we, we are budgeting differently, and it's, it's really, it's, it's, you know, in a weird finance way, kind of exciting. Accounting and exciting are not usually two words I use together. No disrespect intended. But it's really, it's really interesting, but we are looking at, again, revenues more conservatively than, than we have in the past, using a lot of trends and actuals. And then again, our expenditures are really going to be actual expenditures. In the next phase of our Financial Stewardship Working Group, we're going to be looking at at least quarterly reporting. So hopefully we'll get a better sense for where we are in the, you know, in October, and then at the end of the calendar year, the second quarter, so that when we come to you in January, we're going to have a real good sense for how things are trending that, you know, halfway through the fiscal year.
Got it, thank you. And then my second question, it goes to the chart at the end of the CIP expenditures. I just wanted some clarification, because there were the three items that were listed as design only, the Huniparo Drainage Bypass 175, the Mission Trail 175, and the Piccadilly Park restroom design only at 70,000. Did we ever get final numbers or ballpark estimates on what those entire projects were going to cost?
We did. And I left that on my desk. So I'm literally, so I'm going to try and try. I think the Piccadilly was 250. I think Piccadilly is going to be another 250. And then the other one was going to be 700, if I remember correctly. So of the two that you asked for an estimate for, so again, the out-the-door, it was Piccadilly, that was 250, and what was the other one?
Well, there were three originally. It was the Huniparo Bypass Pipe Design, the Mission Trail Stream Projects, that was previously listed as design only, and then the Piccadilly restroom.
The Mission Trails, I think we're looking at potential never, another 700. Piccadilly, if we go down the path we have identified, we were looking at a potential of 2, 250. And the third one, I don't have a number for.
The Huniparo. That, I'm guessing would be big compared to, you know, what the recent project we just did on 11th Avenue. So, and that one was close to what, 800,000, something like that? So potentially in that range?
They're big. And all of these are, you just do this little piece right now, and then we've got to get the next piece on the, the list, the five-year list.
Right. But once you started, you pretty much committed, you know, once you designed it, you're pretty much committed that you're going to be spending that on the entire project.
I mean, that, that is the ideal approach. And, and I think the last council and this council would like us to do, actually do more of the physical improvements, rather than just the design work. So that's why last fiscal year and this current fiscal year, we actually are building in the actual, again, the physical improvements, not just the design work in, in, throughout the CIP in total. And on the Piccadilly restroom, I mean, we're still, Ken and others are still looking at the opportunity to do a design-build project there for the second, the second restroom and remodeling the existing restroom to get that second, the second facility in that park.
Yeah, I think design-build would be very helpful on those type of projects. Thank you.
Is that it? So on the Piccadilly, a high-quality builder, design builder has, has a quote that, that's been provided to the city for, with contingencies of 200,000, and that's DIR reporting its prevailing wage. So I feel, I've been involved with that a lot, and I feel comfortable with that number, 200. I mean, we simplified the project a bit, but I would put 200 down and feel good about it. But I wouldn't feel good about the 70,000. I wouldn't vote for that.
So that's.
That's just for the, the design. It's, it's not necessary. The other, the other one I questioned was, and I've been through this three times now, and Chip and I have talked about this, is, is where's the wall at? When you, when you put this color in there, I'm sort of losing track of things.
I know.
Mayor's going to reference the Sunset Center retaining walls?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's one, again, that the mayor's been doing some research, and if I may say, and again, Ken and I need to spend some time. So I, I appreciate the council and the community's time. Ken's been here for, I think, three weeks now. So he's doing a great job, but we need to give him a little bit more time to get his arms around his department and, and our budget and the CIP.
So do you want to just wait till he has more time, till we fine-tune these numbers?
I would, I would recommend if you're going to keep the list intact, keep these numbers, Mayor. Again, we've certainly heard your voice. And again, if the rest of the council agrees with you, let us do some more legwork after the budget's adopted. And, you know, again, anything that, that we spend money on, we have to come back. Any of these, most of the numbers, so, so for everyone's benefit, my signing authority is, what is it, Brandon? 5, 9, $60,000. So again, any award of contract above $60,000 comes back to council. So again, in, in the spirit of, of additional or increased reporting, we'll keep you apprised of where we are with all these capital projects on a much more regular basis.
So are, are you going to ask us right now to eliminate things if we choose to?
So a part of the discussion, and I think, Brandon, thank you for, for introducing the item. I mean, it's just, there, there's a lot on the list. And, you know, I think, I, I would love to come back to you next year at this time and say we got, you know, 92% of the capital work done. You know, I think, you know, you guys have really challenged me, you're really challenging all of us to, to try to get more done. It's, it's a big list. It's a long list. We still, you know, I'm not going to sit up here and complain about, we're going to try to hire the second project manager, Ken's working on that. We're going to be using outside consultants to project manage. It is a technical field. It's still, it's, it's, even with that, it's a long list, Mayor. So again, what, what Brandon and Ken and others did was they provided that list to, this list to you with the highlighted, the orange, to say, these are important projects, as Brandon said, but it's not the end of the world if we wait a year, if we push them off a year. So to answer your question, sir, it's entirely up to you about whether you'd like to move some of these things to the following fiscal year, or even wait till the end of this calendar year. And we do mid-year review with you, and we say we got all this done, and these were the next projects on the list. Can we appropriate funds for them now?
Okay. Well, I think you're asking us to give you opinions, so let's, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yeah. I guess we've asked questions. You're right.
One more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jamie, I had asked if you could prepare a slide showing us the work that you think will get finished, the CIP work that you think will get finished this year?
So pretty hard to read. This is right now our living document, our forecast. So we are, all the numbers here assume we're going to get 4,870,000 dollars spent this year on the CIP list and carry over 3,893,000 dollars to next year.
So this one, I just pointed out that, okay, last year had a budget of 13 million dollars, and will spend 4.8. Is the tree work in there?
The tree work is in.
Yeah, it is. Okay. So now that's been re-categorized. And, but all of it isn't getting, the difference between 13.2 and 4.8 is not all getting carried over, because for example, the police building project was in that budget at 3.239, which was a, just a random number, in my opinion. And we spent a lot, 630,000 dollars. I guess we can talk later about what we got for that. But then it's just done. And the, the unspent part of 3.239 doesn't get rolled over, it just goes back into the fund balance.
Correct. Because the guidance that was given by council was do these things. When those things were done, then this was put away. At the beginning of the year, there was a different concept for where that project would be. So it was, it changed during the year. So, and that can happen. All of the rest of these are pretty much being done because they're, they're done. That one is a good example of monies where the plan changed.
Good. I have comments on this, but I'll wait until we're doing comments.
Okay, let's, do you take public comments? Anybody have a public comment?
Hello, Maria Rus. I have four comments. The first one is, I want to congratulate Jamie and the work that has been put together. This is an amazing amount of work that went in. It is fully understandable. It is very transparent. It is clear. So Jamie, I have to tell you, fantastic work. It's, it is a work of art. It's incredible that you can stand here and address all the questions and still know all your details. So I want to give you from the bottom of my heart, out of my corporate world experience, congratulate you. So I want to give you a clap, okay? Because I think you've done a terrific job. That's number one. From the, the general comments, okay, the policy changes, I ought to say, I think at this point, I think you can stop making sausages and try to cut things more down. Maybe you give the city administrator an approved budget and then go and execute as much as it can. That'll be my first opinion, because it's very well documented, it's very well done. One issue that I truly have still is, it is hard to approve a budget that is not balanced, that you have higher expenditures versus your revenue sources. And that is, conceptually, is really tough. So my recommendation would be, in addition to thinking, what can you cut? Let's start thinking about what can we generate to bring more revenue? What is it that we can do? Because to the point of the world, I mean, you can cut up to the bone, but sometimes you cannot cut so much. You, so I would recommend, and I don't want to go into the specific numbers, because you're going to go into the specific details, but I honestly think, let's start thinking about revenue generation as well as cutting costs. Because right now, the budget is, yeah, you have a non-balanced budget, you have more expenditures. The one last piece to that, and Bob, I know this is yours, the fund balance of 50%. I know the answer that I was given was that it would be considered for next year in the notes. So I would like you to rethink about 50% of unfunded, unused and assigned funds, and maybe you allocate more to the budget going forward. But I know you want to stick to your 50%, but that's my recommendation. I think 50% is still a very, very large number. So, but overall, good work and amazing, amazing stuff.
Thank you, Maria. Anybody else here?
Good evening. Having done this four years in a row, I know how difficult it is. I know how much you want it to be a good budget, and I think you have really worked this out quite well. I do want to remind you that things that are deferred get more expensive. So when you are looking at what you're going to cut, just realize that in a year or two or three, they will cost more. And what you can't foresee is if you cut certain things out, that causes further damage because of that deferral. So just be careful where you cut. And I tend to agree with Maria. I think the 50% is just a little high, and that might be a good thing to reconsider. And I couldn't agree more with her about looking for revenue. And as we talked before, parking could be a big revenue. So please, we've got to up our revenue and keep our expenses in control, and I appreciate all the hard work that Jamie's done. And I will be so happy to have a new audio improvement, because I want you to know, listening on Zoom last night was extremely difficult. It's even difficult in this room. But Zoom is pretty impossible. So I'm glad that improvement is coming.
Thank you. In the meantime, my, my wife says if you listen on YouTube, the sound is much better.
Yes, but if you listen on YouTube, you don't get to raise your hand, so.
That's true.
I can't have two TVs going at once.
You can have two computers going. Brandon, when was the, the sound going to be installed?
We closed the chambers June 13.
June 13th, coming soon.
We'll be out by 3:30.
Yes, so next meeting, next meeting, we'll be having good sound, right? All right, that's exciting.
What if we have, what if we have the next budget meeting on June 17th? What are we going to do?
Sunset Center.
We'd have the next meeting at Sunset Center if this is shut down, is what Brandon just said. Right? Melanie?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Barrett. Councilmember Barrett asked the question, what would happen? Because we do have a, a meeting in our back pocket if the budget is not adopted tonight for June 17th. And the question was, where would we hold the meeting? We could, we could find space at Sunset Center for that. But that's a contingency plan. The, the plan is to have the chambers back open by your regular meeting in June.
The plan is to approve the budget tonight. The plan is to approve the budget tonight. Melanie, are you going to speak?
All I can say is, wow, it's about time. We had a really, really outstanding budget. And Bob, I know how much you have put into this and Hans and the staff, especially the staff too, working so closely. It's really wonderful to be able to look at this document. Since I first moved here, I've always been interested in the budget and always been extremely critical of the way the city has done the budget. This is the first year that I could say that we really have a budget that the public can understand and that you all can easily work by and that we can use as a yardstick for getting things done and especially moving things done to get done. I would just like to, besides thanking all of you and agreeing with the comments of the two previous speakers regarding how we get out of our financial situation, I really encourage you to start looking at revenue. I know it's not easy. It's not, it's not fun and it's not popular with the public. But to be honest, we really do need to do something. And so, you know, at least the three of us have said, you know, we think, judging from who we talk to, that there is a real need to start looking seriously at revenue. Then there's another question that I need someone to answer for me. And, and that's looking at the CIP for the forest. And from my understanding, I'm not totally sure about this, so it's much of a question for all of you. I think that my understanding is, is that when we look at the budget under the Forest Master Plan and the Implementation Plan for Year Two, there is $739,000 in the budget. And could you clarify, somebody clarify for me? Hans, can you do that? If that's simply for maintenance or if that's going to cover tree planting? Where is the money for tree planting? Is there money for tree planting for the forest? Because under the, under the current Forest Master Plan.
We've got your question.
Yeah. I just wanted to say one thing. Thank you, Mayor. Is that, under the current Forest Master Plan, we're supposed to be doing replacement of trees. And if there isn't, if we're talking about under maintenance tearing down a bunch of trees in the forest, then there's got to be a plan for replanting of those trees. So this being an extremely important part of Carmel's character, people are really missing the trees when they come into Carmel these days. So we need to do something, think seriously about doing something for the forest in this capital improvements program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melanie. Appreciate the kind words. Anybody else here? Anybody online?
Nope, there's no hand raised.
All right, let's bring it back. Comments? Jeff, you want to start?
The one question, Mr. Mayor. I just, I got, thank you for the three speakers. I just got the one question from Mrs. Billigan. So the $739,000 is Year Two of the dead, dying, diseased tree and stump removal. In the operating budget, we do have funds for replanting. So this is, this CIP item for the 739 is just for the second year of the tree catch-up, which again is to remove and kind of get the forest back in shape. And then again, in the operating fund, I'll say it a second time, that's where we have tree planting money. So it comes under supplies, I believe.
Okay.
I was just going to add, it's not the 739, that this three-year tree maintenance catch-up plan is, there's a lot of removals, there's stump removals, et cetera. But there's also some pruning on some poor-conditioned trees as well. So some of it is true maintenance. So.
All right, Jeff, you want to start?
Sure. So I'll say that I would approve the budget as presented by staff. You know, we've had a number of meetings about it, including a couple of extra meetings about the CIP. So I'm pleased with the budget and I would thank Jamie, especially for all of her work and Chip and of course Hans and Bob for all the work that they did, getting our, getting our reporting structure in order and all that. So I'm going to make a couple of comments based on the presentation, just based on the presentation that I've heard. You know, I agree, I agree with, you know, staff has presented this, these $900,000 worth of options. I agree with, I think it was Karen that said that, you know, the longer we wait, the more expensive these things are. And as I look at the, as I look at the, as I look at the items, you know, the yoga center re-roof and the park library window repairs and the road project and all that. You know, some of these things are, you know, they're kind of small. And my guess is staff put them on the list because they're, you know, smaller dollar items and they take a lot of staff time to manage. You know, window repair seems like a pretty management, seems like a pretty management-heavy task for a $50,000 item. I do, I do continue to think, you know, I would certainly go along with it if the council elected to delete these things, delete these six items from the budget. But I think that, I think that what Karen says is true. You know, each of these things, especially the roads and the windows and the roof, you know, these have, these things have the sort of capability of exploding catastrophically if something bad happens. And I think that, I think that, you know, an ounce of prevention is better than a pound of cure. And I would, I would prefer, you know, if staff, you know, it sounds like staff is pushing back on us, which is, I'll say, that's completely fine. But I would really prefer that we, that staff found a way or we found a way to enable staff to hire a contract project manager to do this stuff. Like, I appreciate that it takes management to hire a man, to hire a contract manager as well. I appreciate that there's some extra cost involved in having Ken or Javier manage a manager. But I would prefer to allocate, you know, $50,000 more dollars, if that's what it is, to have these projects taken care of so that we don't have a, so that we don't have a disaster lying in wait. So that's my comment on the, on the orange, the orange things in the report. On the, on the three things that, you know, Alessandra asked, thank you for, thank you for asking those questions. I have a little bit of, I have a little bit, I have some comments on that. You know, the Unibro bypass, you know, that's probably the most expensive part of our drainage thing. And that's the next thing to do. So I think that, I think that regardless of, regardless of how much it's going to cost, regardless of how much it's going to cost to.
Just going to have to put the list back up again as you're talking through it.
Regardless of, you know, how much it's going to cost. And it says $175,000 to design it. And if I, and I'm searching my memory, but I think it's a million-dollar project. I think it's an enormous project. It's a big drainage pipe that runs down Unibro. And that's, you know, that's the next thing to do in the Drainage Master Plan. You know, we put off doing Drainage Master Plan projects for a year this past year because we'd done them, done them for a while. And, and I really don't want to see that work. I really do not want to see that work stalled. That's, it's a long-term plan to fix all the drainage issues around town. This is the next thing up. It's going to cost, you know, this is one of those things where, you know, we can, we can complain that, you know, it's going to cost a million dollars to do, but that's how much it's going to cost. You know, we'll go out and we'll bid it and it's going to cost what it's going to cost. And I don't think that putting it off for a year is the right thing to do. The Mission Trail Nature Preserve, $700,000, the $700,000 estimate. You know, I think that, I've not talked to Chip about this, so maybe I get Chip's opinion. But I think that in the past, we have done, you know, I've spoken about this before. A lot of times in the past, we do this design work and then we find a different way to pay for it. And I think that that happened part of the, I think that happened partially with the first phases of the Mission Trail Nature Preserve project. You know, we put some money in, we put some money in and did the design work. And that resulted in us getting a grant to pay for a lot of the, a lot of the construction work that went into those projects. So while, while $700,000 sounds like a lot and it is a lot, I think, you know, it sounds like there's an opportunity to get a grant there. And I think that it's worth the, I think that it's worth, you know, admittedly, I think, you know, there's, there's some risk. But I think it's worth doing the work and doing the design work and then searching for grant opportunities. On the Piccadilly Park restroom, you know, Dale, I hear, I hear what you say. I think that I, you know, Hans brought this up at the last meeting about design build. And I'm reminded, I'm reminded of the, I'm reminded of the bathroom at Scenic. You know, the bathroom of Scenic in San Lucia. And I think that was before you were here, when we had those blue, those blue portable restrooms that were just a fixture. I mean, they've been here, I don't know, you're like for a decade. Like, when I moved here in 2000, when we bought our house in 2005, they were here. And they were here for, you know, a year, you know, years, decades. And we started doing that design work and it took, I don't, that was before I was on the council. It must have taken two years to build that project. And, and I think that a design build, I agree with, I think what Hans said before. I think that this is a, this is a bathroom in a, in a pretty sensitive area. And I think that the, you know, that park is a really delightful little park on Delores. And, and I think that, you know, I think that the goal of doing the design build, like I'm generally not in fa, I would say first, I'm not in favor of that at this moment. But I also think that this is really not the time to have that particular conversation. And I think if we leave the $75,000, $70,000 in the budget, which is an estimate for the design of that bathroom, I think that as we start to get down that road, as we have a council discussion about what we're going to do to either let it or not let it turn into a process that resembled the Scenic bathroom process, I think there will be an opportunity in that, you know, during, during that later phase to adjust the budget if we need to. You know, if the council decides to do a design build project and it comes out to $200,000 or whatever that number might be, I think it's entirely possible to change the $70,000 to a, to do a budget amendment and change the $70,000 to a $270,000 or a $200,000 number, whatever it is. But I would prefer at this point to just leave the $70,000 number in there and have a longer discussion at a later date about what we're going to do. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Hans?
Yeah, no, but I don't know if you could load up. I made a couple.
If I could summarize, let me get it. Did you say you want to leave all the highlighted things, pretty much? You want to leave everything, everything? Okay. Thanks, sorry, Hans.
No, no worries. I wanted to also thank the staff, Jamie. She's a real great asset for the city. You know, we worked very closely with her and I'm really impressed. And then also Chip and Brandon on this Financial Stewardship Group. I think they've had a really open mind, which, you know, for a couple of new council members coming in, you know, that's not guaranteed. And I really appreciated that and that you've been great to work with. So thank you. I had sort of two main points. And I don't know if there's a way to get this guy loaded up.
Reese, can you show the Zoom screen in the chambers? If that doesn't work, I can just.
So the, I guess the first point that I wanted to make was that I think it sort of gets lost oftentimes when we're having these discussions because it's sort of complicated. But from a balance sheet perspective, we're actually in a really good place. And what I tried to do was go through and just kind of simplify. I think some of the charts that we have can be like a little bit confusing at times. And I just wanted to sort of try to simplify it. And so, you know, if we could actually go to the next slide, there is, you know, we've created this rainy day fund, right? And we basically collapsed a bunch of reserves into a single reserve. And it has $15.7 million projected at the end of this fiscal year, right? Which, as we've talked about, is about 50% of revenue, right? It's a really healthy reserve. We should feel really confident about that. And we can quibble about maybe we should use some of that or not. But regardless, the money is there, right? Second, we have all this money that, for reasons I'll talk about in a second, we can just do whatever we want with. And we have this fancy name called unassigned fund balance, of which we're estimating that the end of this fiscal year, right at the end of the month, will have $14.2 million, right? And so I tried to highlight these two because we've got about $15, $16 million of reserves. And then on top of that, we've got $14 million that we can really do whatever we want with, right? And in general, you know, CIP projects are the things that come to mind. So when we talk about this budget and how it's, you know, not balanced, et cetera, true. But that's exactly what that $14 million is supposed to be used for. Like that, we already have a reserve. The $14 million is supposed to be used for capital projects. And I'm not going to even mention the other three sort of smaller items. If we could go to the next slide, the other thing that I think is sort of generally like not well-understood is where does the $14 million of unassigned fund balance come from, right? And I wanted to highlight a few places where it comes from. So one of the things we often don't get a chance to do unless you sort of dig into, you know, our audit reports, is to look at budget versus actuals, right? What did we budget and then what actually happened over, you know, a number of years, over an extended period of time? And so, you know, we've sort of systematically, I mean, I think Chip and Jamie kind of alluded to this. One of the things that in our, in our Finance Committee that we've been pushing for and that I think the council has been pushing for is sort of more realistic budgeting. And so generally speaking, every year, we're very conservative in our budgeting and we wind up with money left over. And so one of those areas is revenue. And probably the biggest area is revenue. And so this just shows, what did we budget in each of the last, you know, seven fiscal years? And then what did it actually come out at? And as you can see, you know, we wound up with, except for one of those years, substantially more revenue in actuality than we budgeted for, right? We under, we underestimated how much revenue we would get. 1.3 million, 6 million, 2.3, 2.5, 3.9, 4.1, right? It's really significant. And so over time, you know, the net of all these impacts shows up in unassigned fund balance. If we could quickly just go to the next one. Another area is salaries. So the, the general procedure here in the past has been to budget salaries at the top salary step. And of course, not every employee is at the top salary step. And so it's almost a hidden contingency within the operating budget. And as you can see, again, every year, 1.4, 1.3, $2.5 million every year. So this is money that becomes left over. And then the last one is capital improvement projects. And, you know, this is one where we look at, how much did we budget? And then what did we actually spend? And as you can see, again, a significant delta between budget and actuals. And so especially on the first two, the revenue and then the salaries, that's really contributed to this unassigned fund balance. So if we can go back to kind of the second slide, the one with the green, you know, the main point here is that we're actually in a really good position, you know, from a balance sheet perspective. You know, the, the second point is that our operating budget is really where we have the work to do. And I've sort of made this point before, but, you know, it was really Bob's idea to limit, to say, hey, we're going to make sure that 10% of our revenue is devoted to CapEx every year, right? So roughly, that's $3.4 million. Jamie just showed a slide where, you know, we're going to need eight, nine-ish million dollars a year, right? And if we're, if 10% is 3.4, what does that tell you? It means we need to find another four, maybe five million dollars a year in our primary operating budget, right? And so that is really where the work needs to be done. Because eventually we will run out of, despite how good this looks, we will eventually run out of the unassigned fund balance. And so I would, one of my. And so I would, one of my critiques of our process this year has been, and I'll take part of the blame for that since, you know, we've been involved on the, on the work group, is I think that our focus has sort of been flipped, it's been off. And maybe it's just because it's easier to look at these capital projects, you know, as sort of discrete projects. And it's fine, we can look at that, but really I think where the work needs to be done is on the operating budget to make sure that we can cover 7, 8, 9 million dollars of capex going forward based on the revenues we have. Whether that's a combination of cuts to operating expenses, adding revenues, et cetera. So that's sort of like my take at a very high level on kind of where we are and the budget. Now I'm going to do exactly what I just decried, which is now I'm going to talk about specifically the CIP projects because that's, you know, kind of what we've been asked to do. You know, I think there's some of these things that I'm probably okay to, to cut, like the yoga center, the park branch windows. You know, I'm okay to potentially put those off for a year. One thing that came up in an email to us was the Fourth Avenue Outfall. And Scott Lonergan made a pretty interesting point, you know, he mentioned maybe it makes sense for us to get the coastal adaptation study back before we make a big investment like that. You know, the idea being that potentially that area could get eroded over time. And so I think one thing that could be interesting to explore is like, is there a potential for a temporary fix there just to deal with the safety issue? That's a big dollar amount number, you know, complicated project that could help us maybe with some of the concerns that we have this year on the CIP budget. And he had some interesting ideas about, you know, potentially like a subsurface drainage system, you know, that could, that could deal with potential erosion in the future. So I think that's one that actually is really interesting. There are a few of these that I'm not as into cutting. I don't like cutting the $300,000 for roads. You know, we're carrying over a road project, we only have $300,000 out of 7.9 million for roads. The thing that you hear from people is they want us to fix the roads and so I'm not, I'm not for cutting that. The scenic pathway, you know, I think Carmel Cares is probably going to do most of that anyway and so I would love to keep that in there. And then the last one that I would make a pitch for keeping, it shows as being potentially on the chopping block here is the objective design standards. You know, as you know, for ADUs, we have, we have no design ability to influence those. The state has stripped us of our, you know, subjective design review. The only thing that can protect us is objective design standards and I really think it's important for us to, to keep that in the budget. So those are my comments. We, you know, we had a, we had a comment on, yeah, whether 200,000 or 100,000. I had extensive conversation with Brandon and Chip earlier today and, you know, my personal preference is to leave enough in there so that we can do what we need. Brandon assures me that he thinks he can do it with, with a slightly lower dollar amount, but, you know, my preference is to make sure we have really excellent objective design guidelines. I think that's what the community wants, so.
You and I have researched the Sunset Center parking lot. What's your latest thought? You didn't mention that.
Yeah, you know, I think that there are parts of the Sunset Center parking lot that need to be paved, like the turn-in right in front when you're entering and then that strip on St. Carlos, those are in really bad shape. Also, the entrance to the south lot is in bad shape. I really do think the south lot itself is totally fine. That being said, I get that there are economies of scale. You know, so if it's like, hey, it's just easier to do it all at once, you know.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm okay with it. Again, just to go back to the objective design standards, just to put everything in perspective, like if we're going to spend $300,000 to repave these parking lots at the Sunset Center, I think the community would want us to spend the money to have really awesome objective design standards, so.
Thank you, Hans.
Thank you, and by the way, thank you for that nice analysis. It's impressive.
In fact, can I hijack it?
Yeah.
Can we put that one back up?
Can we share the zoom again? Oh, great.
Yeah, this one. Thank you. So, I want to build on what Hans said because I agree, I agree with everything he said and that when you look at our balance sheet and you look at the asset side of the balance sheet, it looks really promising because we have managed to sock away a lot of money over the years and that's, that's all good. And what I found in working with Hans on the financial stewardship work group is he's somewhat more optimistic on some things than I am and that's probably because I'm twice his age. But the other side of your balance sheet has to include liabilities. And we are in a position where our assets are nowhere near equal to our liabilities and they're probably equal to maybe one-third of our liabilities. And that's the challenge, and Jamie brought this up already, we don't really have a reliable number for what our liabilities are. I mean, we've got a huge number that we, you know, 30-some million dollars for unfunded pension liability that could grow by 50%. That's a big number that could be already bigger than, than these, the numbers of assets we have here. And we're just getting started really on quantifying what, what the real number is of what we've been calling deferred maintenance, but just things we got to get done. And, and that's both hard infrastructure and soft infrastructure and they're just big numbers. So I agree with everything that we, I think for the next couple of years, we're kind of okay, but it's not going to be pretty for a long time after that because we just got a lot of work to do. Can we go to Jamie? Can I go back to the slide of what was accomplished, what we think is going to be accomplished for the CIP? Yeah, great. So when, actually, when, I ran for office primarily when I saw this over a year ago and actually I'd seen the one the year before and I just started to get concerned that, my concern was that there wasn't enough discipline in the way that we were going about our development of budgets and just really, you know, the overall fiscal management of the city. And that was a suspicion more than anything. So, you know, when I ran for office, I just really made it a point that it was my intent to just really dig in on the numbers and make sure that, that fairly quickly after getting elected, that A, we would form the financial stewardship work group, which this council supported and I think has been terrific. And I echo Hans's comments about saying thank you to staff for just a great collaboration for the last six months. And, you know, when we started that, I just stated, my, my personal goal was to be able to do three things. One is to tell you as, as my constituents, as our citizens, that I understand sort of the financial hydraulics of our, of our town, of our town government and that our staff understands the financial hydraulics of our town. And if, you know, that's the first one I wanted to accomplish. I feel we've accomplished that and I think our staff does understand, you know, how the finances of our town work. The second one would be to tell you with a straight face that we are spending your money on all of the right things and not on the wrong things. And the third thing is that we are spending it wisely and not wasting it. I'm not there yet on number two or number three. So that's still a work in process and I'm not criticizing where we are, I'm just saying I don't know, I don't, I'm not, I'm not there yet. But this, I, to me, you know, the budget process is a financial process, but it's also a management process. And to, when I look at a budget of $13.2 million and an accomplishment of $4.8 million, that's my problem with creating too large a CIP. It, it makes, it's impossible, impossible for me to hold Chip and staff accountable and I think we do need to increase our culture of accountability with our management team. It's a good thing, you know, that, and that I can't, I can't hold somebody accountable when we knowingly budget three times more than we think we can ever spend. Because I just don't have, I don't have any, you know, thing to do, I can't do it. The other thing is waste and I'm going to pick on the police building project, that we've spent $630,000 studying a police station in a public works building. And I don't think we have anywhere near $630,000 in value to show for it. To the contrary, not even close. And I think that's what happens when you approve too big a CIP or too big a budget in general. You lose focus, you don't have the resources to pay close enough attention. And I'm not going to try and do a dissection of what happened on that project, but we can't let that happen again. So, you know, so when, when I go forward and start talking about where our spending, especially our capital spending should be, I'm just going to push for more realistic numbers. So if we could go then to the CIP. Great, I'll just give you my rundown. I would be absolutely delighted if we cut all the things that staff has suggested cutting. I think they're giving us breadcrumbs to follow. I think they're telling us by giving us these projects that they've gone through, they've done the analysis that I asked them to do, which was to say, is this important and urgent? And they've kind of come back and said, everything in here is important, these aren't necessarily urgent, therefore let's not do them this year. They're also, they're also saying, we don't think we can get them done, I think is what they're saying. So I would be fine taking them out. That said, I'll approve a budget that has them in at this point because that's where we are. I'm proud of the budget that we've put together. I just think we could get a little bit more fine-tuned on this. So I would start there and then I just want to pick up on a couple of Jeff's points. I've kind of changed my tune on the, the work in the Mountain Trail Nature Preserve. What I heard last time and, and as I've dug in more, that the Friends of Mission Trail, they are, they're a reliable partner that when they do a study and they follow up with the, with the work, they sometimes find grant, grant money, but they get the work done. And I, again, a culture of accountability, they have proven to be an accountable, reliable partner, that they follow up and get it done. So I like that, I want to encourage that. Similarly with the drainage project, that was work that a previous council wisely started and we can't stop doing that. It's, it's invisible to us, but we have to deal with our, our drainage issues. And so going into this knowing that there's a big number to follow on that, I'm agreeing with Jeff, is that's acceptable to me, knowing we're going to have to find that if it's a million dollars and that's going to have to be a priority in a future year. And that right there is an example of a number, that, that's really a liability that we have that is not on our balance sheet, right? I think that's, it, oh, you know, I've been on record on the Piccadilly restroom design. I think Jeff put forward the right answer, which is just leave it in there at 70 and then let's just see what happens. I think the fact that it is, I don't think it's going to be as simple as just getting it done. I'm not sure that's a point-and-shoot project because it is a park. I think that means the Forest and Beach Commission needs to have an opinion and it might even be historic and Historic Resource Board might have an opinion, that's going to take a little bit of time. And sometimes government takes a little bit of time and... Oh, yeah, okay, the outfall, thank you, Hans. I don't know enough to weigh in. What I do know is that we, we need to stop studying the beach and start doing the beach. And this one has been on there a long time. It's just something that I happen to walk by on a regular basis. I think it is deteriorating in real time. I think it is dangerous. You know, is, I'm going to just defer to Public Works honestly on this one. You know, let Ken look at it, let, you know, let that crew give us their opinion of what the need is. If it can be addressed with shotcrete and maintained and managed for a year until a plan is finished, that makes sense, but I also, I really worry about it falling on somebody's head. And I think it's, it's more than a drainage challenge, it's a, it's a safety challenge. And I live, I live right on that Fourth Avenue Creek and, you know, it overflows its, its bad, that's a ton of centrifugal force, I guess you would call it head, of water blasting into that thing.
Times a year.
At least three times a year and it's, I'm afraid it blows out. So I'm more inclined to say get it done, I think. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Alessandra?
Thank you, Mayor. I certainly want to extend my appreciation to Jamie for all the work that you've done and it's incredible job and certainly to Bob and Hans with the financial stewardship group. I think that it's just been such a positive addition to this whole process and I'm very grateful not only for the work you've done, but I think that these are positive improvements that we're putting in place that will help us in future years. I think the 90-10 idea is really good and very beneficial. I do worry about long-term, you know, with our five-year CIP for example and all of our deferred maintenance on our city buildings, we're talking about huge sums of money that right now, we don't have any idea how we would pay for that. And just as we look at this five-year plan, just, you know, even a few years down the road, we're already getting into a situation where we're going to need extra money to be able to continue on. So that certainly concerns me. And I think I had a bit of a reality check, I'm just speaking really honestly after we had our budget workshop. You know, it's, it's easy to say, let's do some of these cuts and all that, but these are all really good projects. You know, and as Chip always, always says is, you know, there are no bad projects. And the reality is we are behind on a lot of CIP work and so I can understand, you know, not wanting to make these cuts and putting them in here and they are valuable things and even things that, you know, you don't see like, you know, drainage and things like that, that are the expensive projects, but these are things that a city needs to do to maintain all kinds of its infrastructure. What I would say is, once again, my concern is, as I had last time around, is just that historically we don't get around to doing all these projects. You know, we, as Bob rightly said, you know, we make a large CIP budget, but we don't have the staff right now. We have one project manager, so either we need to hire a second one, approximately $200,000, or do consultants, which, you know, a lot of times we get a lot of pushback from the public when we do consultants, but, you know, somehow we need to be able to get some of this work done. And I know Ken has a lot of on his plate and we have a lot of faith in you, so you've come in at a very busy time. So, I mean, those are concerns I have, but on the other hand, I really appreciate all the comments that my fellow council members have made and just all the work that has gone into this and I think this is a good budget for our community. And there's just a lot of hard decisions down the road that we're going to need to make to fine-tune things and find out how we can continue on with this and how we can, you know, do a lot of this infrastructure and deferred maintenance that is a significant concern. So thank you again, everyone, for all your work on this.
All right, Chip, do you have anything to say?
No, no, thank you. This is, it's, it's great, I'm taking some good notes. I just appreciate, I mean, again, where this discussion's going about whether we should keep everything in and continue to better report or whether you'd like to excise some things in, in, in light of the fact that it's challenging to get everything done. As I have said, I did promise you by the end of the calendar year, I would hire the second project manager, come back with a plan if I can. Thank you for your support of using consultants. It is, it is sometimes a dirty word around here because they do cost a little bit more, but we don't own them as employees and there's not the additional benefits and liabilities that go with them. But again, I do want to reinforce that one of Ken's primary objectives right now is to, is to calculate our overall infrastructure exposure. Jamie used between 33 and 60 in the slide and, you know, hopefully it's not over 100 million, we don't know what it is. For the facilities that we do have, facilities for, reports for, it's 34 million. So hopefully again, within the next six months, nine months, we'll have a better sense for the rest of those facilities. So it's just been a really healthy discussion, Mayor. It's fascinating, I'm here to... I'm here to, I'm here to do whatever you want me to do.
Okay, thank you. I've been taking notes and what I'm hearing is that the consensus is to leave everything in, approve the budget as it is. I'm not making a motion, but somebody else can after I'm finished here. And to keep a close eye on the Fourth Avenue Outfall, the Piccadilly Restroom Project, and I think the bypass pipe design, I think everybody was good with, leaving it as is. I mean, that's pretty much what I heard. And, and give Ken the flexibility, he needs to closely analyze these projects and sharpen his pencil. And I'm sure there'll be some adjustments made, working with Mary and the team over there, they know what they're doing. And so I think, I think everybody's pretty happy with the budget, the way it is, based on what I heard.
Just one more thing, and Brandon texted me. So it's, it's with your support for the, with your support of using resources to get things done, it's not that we, we can't get it done, but it's really nice hearing you say, you know, understanding that an employee, a new employee does cost about $200,000, Council Member Dramoff hit that nail on the head, and, and the consultants. So we have your support. And that, that means, let me tell you, it means the world to me because we can go forth. And again, you're going to see 99.9% of these projects for a ward of contracts before you. So we'll remind you that of your support on, on June 2nd of 2025.
Are you going to also do quarterly reporting or intended to do quarterly reporting on this?
Yes, sir, yeah. And, and again, I think that that's the next phase that, one of the next phases that Financial Stewardship is going to look into is what should the reporting, what should the dashboard look like that we can share, not just with Financial Stewardship, but the entire council, but the community? So, and there are, there are platforms out there where Ms. Bruce can click on a project she's interested in and see where we are, is it in the design, is it construction, is it completed, how much money we've spent? So looking at that kind of a dashboard, obviously, we'll be looking, what we want to bring to you is, is in addition, is what our unfunded actual liability is with a dynamic table, something we've, we've also talked about bringing before council and the community to have that real open discussion, there were a couple of other items. So I, I think there's just this new, what was that, that word years ago, perestroika, this new openness, and we'll be bringing you information.
Got that turned out.
In a different format.
Take that back, Chip.
The philosophy of it, the philosophy of it.
We'll come up with a better word. I'm sure Jeff, I'm sure Hans has a perfect word for that.
I have a quick comment. Just when you bring back, what I would ask when you bring back these quarterly reports, you know, you know, a lot of times quarterly reports look backwards, like, you know, so where we are now, they look backwards or they, you know, they talk about where we are at this point in time. And what I would be interested in seeing, you know, this is a pretty long list. And, you know, I'm interested, you know, from, from this chair and getting you the resources you need to finish the list. And so when you bring back the first quarterly report, you know, after the first quarter, you know, in October, whenever that is, I would be interested in knowing how you're going to get through this list. And, you know, whether, you know, how the recruitment is going, whether we need to hire contractors, you know? Alessandra talked about, you know, reluctance in the community to hire contractors, and that's definitely a thing. But I think also that it's our job to sort of sell that to the community. And it would be a lot easier, you know, for us to do that if we could point to this list and say, you know, we're going to hire contractors, you know, Chip has said we're going to hire contractors, and that's going to allow us to get these eight things done that we wouldn't otherwise get done. I think that that's important for us to be able to bring back. And so I'll, you know, make a motion.
Yep, clean motion.
Can I, can I ask, can I ask, I apologize for delaying, but can I just ask for like a real quick kind of on the Fourth Avenue Outfall? Does anyone else have any interest in potentially delaying that to wait for the adaptation study?
I would, I would, but I don't go there as often as, as Bob does. Bob has pretty, he's there a lot.
I think that there are, Mayor.
Yeah.
I think that there are a couple of things sort of going on. I think that, you know, Bob, Bob spoke about that thing falling on people. And that's a risk. Like, I think that's a, I think that that is a significant risk. And I, sometimes things are, you know, you know, it's not the, maybe it's not the optimal time, maybe Scott's right. But if it falls on someone, that's, that's a pretty significant problem. The other thing, the other thing is that, you know, we're, this adaptation study is going to bring back a whole list of things, and it's going to have to be accepted by the council. And I'm not under any illusions that that is going to be an easy process, you know? And changing, you know, when that design comes back or, you know, when, when the design, what, you know, we're going to, Scott is right, we're going to rebuild that thing kind of close to, kind of close to where it is. But the options of not rebuilding that thing close to where it is, you know, I'm projecting coastal commission interference, the drainage actually runs underground, underneath the north dunes, you know, it's an environmentally sensitive habitat area, you know, we've, we've seen what happens with the Mission Trail Nature Preserve Plan when we start veering off, when we try to do things in environmentally sensitive habitat areas and a number of permits that we have to get.
Got it. So, so Ken and Mary are here, are you hearing our concerns?
Yes.
So are you okay with us approving it as is, but with those concerns noted?
Yes.
That, that we make sure that it's safe if we have to delay it? Scott's email was excellent. Scott's amazing. He has been sending us some emails that blow my mind. And thank goodness, he's engaged in sending us all that information for free. So we're, I think we should approve it with the clean budget as the budget stands, but with notices, we've got a few things that we want you to keep a close eye on and give us some feedback as soon as you can. All right, you okay, Hans? Okay.
So I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 202552, adopting the fiscal year 2025-26 annual operating and capital budget.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delbs?
Yes.
Councilmember Germau?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Are we allowed to have a round of applause? I'll say yes. And thank you so much, it's been said before, but what a, what a performance by everybody that was on the team putting this together. And, and you were spectacular tonight, Jamie. So relaxed, it was beautiful. All right. Okay. Are we going to, okay, we're going to take a 20-minute break? And we're going to take, come back at 20 minutes or a half hour? Okay, we're going to come back at quarter after seven. Thank you for being patient.
All right, we're back in session and we're going to move on to item three under public hearings. It's the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 2025-002, amending Carmel Municipal Code, Section 15.08.010 and Section 15.10.020 to adopt the 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map for the city as identified by the California State Fire Marshal in accordance with Government Code, Section 51178. And this is estimated at 45 minutes, but I bet we can bring it in a lot sooner than that.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Byrne, council members. You just took my first slide, so I will skip that. I'm Anna Jeanette with Community Planning and Building here to present on the ordinance for the Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps. So just a quick refresher on May 5th, staff presented these maps before the City Council and we are now returning for their adoption. On the left side of the screen is the 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Zone Map prepared by the State Fire Marshal. I do want to note that the map to, did I say left? That's right. The map to the left is the existing map. It also illustrates the areas that are designated as a wildland urban interface area. So staff just wants to note that adoption of these new maps will not change any boundaries or applicable regulations to the WUI. Based on today's presentation and the tentative dates set, the city will be adopting these maps in accordance with the timelines set forth in state law. After adoption of the ordinance, staff will transmit the information over to the State Board of Forestry and Fire Protection and the regulations that apply within these areas will then be applicable to the new properties. So staff received some correspondence from members of the public wanting a little bit more education as to what these regulations mean and what will apply. So currently, Chapter 45, 49 requirements apply in areas that are zone very high as well as the WUI zones. So the first set staff wanted to highlight is the requirement for the installation of new landscaping. These plantings must be fire resistant. However, if you look at the last bullet in this subsection, there is an exception for the planting of non-fire resistant trees. Those new trees that are planted would have to maintain a 30-foot separation from a combustible structure. Other spacing is notated on this slide. So in terms of maintaining existing vegetation or landscaping, defensible space requirements will also be applicable. And this is basically the maintenance and the reduction of fuels on a property. There is a guideline that the State Board is working on to include what is called Zone Zero or an ember resistant zone. That is the zone between the structure or an ember-resistant zone. That is the zone between the structure and five feet from that structure. These guidelines have not yet been adopted, however, fire and staff have been having discussions with the public, just to notify them that they're up and coming. I believe the expectation is that these guidelines be adopted sometime in the beginning of 2026. Other requirements of Chapter 49, if a new structure is to be built, it's required to have home hardening or hardening materials. And in addition to that, if one was to sell a property, that's it, within these hazard areas, there is a required disclosure for that. So the home hardening required in Chapter 49 is specified in Chapter 7A of the California Building Code. Staff went over this at the previous hearing, but just to highlight a few main points, these would apply for the construction of new buildings in areas that are now zone moderate, high, very high, and these will remain to be applicable in the WUWE areas. And it's basically the construction of a new structure, including an attached deck, porch, or balcony, must have fire resistant or fire... fire resistant or ignition resistant materials. These materials are also specified in the California Building Code. Belts and suspenders, there is also vegetation management section in Chapter 7A that points back to Chapter 49. There are also existing citywide requirements that were specified in a standard operating guidance from 2018. These will continue to apply citywide, and there will be no change with the adoption of the updated maps. The first one is the requirement for a Class A roofing assembly, that is for a new roof, or if a replacement roof included the replacement of 25% or more of the roof structure, the whole roof would be required to have a Class A rating. So with that, staff recommends that the City Council find the action statutorily exempt from SEQA pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 2108B1, and SEQA Guidelines, Section 15268. Request the city attorney to read the draft ordinance title, motion to introduce and waive reading of the ordinance, and then direct staff to return July 1st for adoption of the ordinance. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am available for questions if you have any.
Anybody have a question?
I've got two. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. So my first question is, is there a body to appeal to if a fire official tells you you must cut a tree or vegetation?
There, through the chair, there are... There's language in Chapter 49 that speaks to environmentally sensitive habitat areas, and don't know if it strictly speaks to a specific body, but the intent is to work with the fire department to come to a solution, and just get to the main intent of ensuring that combustible materials are far enough away from a structure.
Okay, because I'm just worried if a homeowner is told, you know, because we love our trees in Carmel, you know, who they could, you know, appeal if somebody's telling them they need to do that.
I think that's a very important point. I know in the past, when the regulations first came out a few years ago, a lot of the members of the public assumed that was, that meant you had to clearcut all of the vegetation on your property, and that is certainly not the case. It's reducing fuel load and a fuel ladder, and just maintaining separation.
Okay, thanks. And then my second question is, there might be people who are not able to afford it, especially if there's a lot of work that they would need to do. Is there anything the city could do? And then what was interesting is, at the beginning of our meeting, we had the gentleman from the Fire Association, and he mentioned that there's a defensible space grant program. Is that something that the city could work with his organization, so that that money could help somebody if they're in a position of need?
Yes, I would definitely be able to, or be willing to reach out.
Great, thank you.
Start to the left, Jeff. Have any questions? Hans?
I actually had a similar question to Councilmember Dramoff. I was speaking with a couple constituents who had mentioned, you know, a jurisdiction up in Marin, where the city actually, and presumably through some of these grant funds, provided grants to homeowners to help with defensible space work around their home. And so I'd be interested in, you know, potentially us researching that a little bit, because I think that could really help with some of these situations, where some of these things are going to be quite expensive, and, you know, so if that's a possibility, that'd be great.
Yes. I also want to mention that in the state law, there is a section that talks about grant funding made available, so we can explore that.
I think, Hans, as we proceed with our work group, there were some of the landscaping restrictions, which are pretty draconian for us, like you can't put anything on your yard. So I imagine that's the kind of thing we'll be dealing with as we get more into it, so we can make recommendations with the fire department's blessing. All right, good. All right.
And if I may, Mayor, what the mayor's talking about is, we do have a working group, Mr. Buder and Mayor Byrne, myself, Anna, Ken, our fire chief, our police chief and commander. And we're going out, eventually we're going to have public meetings, but we're kind of in the homework stage, I would say, right now, gathering information. We'll be going out to Pescadero Canyon along Second Avenue, and then Mission Trail Nature Preserve. I think it's next week, Mayor. Was this, is it?
This week.
Tomorrow.
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 Tomorrow at 1:00.
And again, that's part of the homework, and so everybody can see what's going on. And also, you know, seeing the amount of fuel load reduction we have done, and the basins removal, and then what still needs to be done. So again, eventually, we'll be having a series of public education outreach meetings, and then again, as Councilmember Dramoff suggests, making sure that we have a vehicle for people to talk to a fire prevention person, and/or maybe grant funding, so we can help people that may not have the financial wherewithal to maintain their property in the right way.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
Of course.
Karen Forlito. Well, you know, this is near and dear to my heart, since I live over Mission Trail Nature Preserve, and our group has been doing a wonderful job of working with the city in a public-private partnership to remove fire fuel. We have someone who works for us. We are just about to start a mowing operation very soon. Last year, we mowed all the trails, and we mowed all along Mission, excuse me, Willow Trail, and so on and so forth. That is really helpful. A few years ago, we had, when Anyas was here, we had an idea that all of the properties along Ridgewood, which go all the way down to Willow Trail, most of them, we do the fire fuel up to the power line, but we wanted to have a meeting with all the neighbors on that street to apprise them of what they could do, and that they would be able to hire people to bring all of the fire fuel from their properties down to Willow Trail, where it could be taken out easier, rather than having them try to haul it all up to Ridgewood. And for some reason, that didn't take place, and I think it's worthy of considering, when your group goes out, taking a look at those properties. I think one of the best things that the city could push for, though, is to remove that power line that is going up to Flanders. There is no reason for a power pole and a transformer to be there when the power to Flanders could be brought in from Hatton Road in a much safer way. And, you know, there is also a power line all along below all the Ridgewood people, but I understand, and it could be verified easily, I suppose, that it's a higher-grade power line, and they do go in and trim. But that one going up to Flanders, there's also a large eucalyptus tree with a huge limb hanging out over that power line. And PG&E evidently isn't worried if the limb is 10 feet from the line. Now, if the limb falls down, and it was over it, that's going to be a problem. But please, when you're out on that walk, and Jen Valdez would be a good person to go to from Monterey, the fire prevention thing, please take a look and see about possibly reenacting a program to acquaint all the people along Ridgewood with what could be done to make their properties safer, because you're only as safe as your neighbor, and there are properties that need cleaning out. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Yes, Nancy Toomey. I, let's see, a couple of questions. I'm still looking for updates from planning and/or, you know, relevant departments on when are we going to receive a standard business operating procedure for metal roof requests, because I still think that requires an extra loop or two to get approved. Also, with the recommendations for the five-feet defensible space, that will significantly alter the look and feel of the village as we drive around, removing a lot of shrubbery, et cetera. And I get why that need is there, but it seems like we're missing more guidance on what that should be and how it should be. I don't know if that's going to come from your working group, but in the meantime, we're being nudged for, you know, filling out these self-assessments by the fire, Monterey Fire, which I get that's important to do, et cetera, and, you know, reinforcements of the same, coming in the Friday letter, without more specific guidance to residents' owners on what we should do, how we should do it, when we should do it, if there's going to be an option for haulaway of stuff that we might self-provision to maintain our property, getting closer to those requirements, et cetera. So I'm still feeling that there's a whole lot of gaps, even in a very tactical form, to residents that we don't yet have, and would love to know what kind of a sense of when those should happen, and/or should we hang on to those self-assessment forms? Shouldn't we, should we sign up for a defensible space inspection? Or shouldn't we, you know, who should be doing those things, and when? So some more gentle guidance, knowing that it could morph over time, I get that. We live in a dynamic world, so there's a bunch of to-dos in this, and definitions and guidance for residents, property owners, and the like. And then, of course, I would be remiss in not mentioning that the Carmel Prepares is having a Saturday workshop on January the 21st, on Sat... Oh, sorry, thank you, yes, June 21st, with the fire police and the whole cert teams, et cetera. So that's an important venue where more information can be conveyed, or should be conveyed in an ideal world. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Hans, I know that you've been more in the weeds, so to speak, on this, pardon the pun, but do you have an idea about, like, is there a way that we could draft some kind of a preliminary document based on what we're probably going to know in the next couple weeks?
Yeah, you know, I was going to address some of that in my comments, but I guess I'll, I can wait till...
All right, we'll just wait. Okay, good. Any other comments? All right. No, all right, let's bring it back. Jeff, we'll start with you.
Seems to be a habit now.
Yeah. Once in a while, I'll go that way.
I used to start in the middle.
We can do that.
I'm ready. I'm ready. So I think there are a number of sort of issues that we still, as I spoke about last time, that we need to wrestle with. And now there's one more, I think Alessandra asked about, people that can't afford to do the work, and I think that that's pretty close to the top of the list. I mentioned last time, you know, landscaping interaction with city codes, and I think Nancy talked about that a little bit, and Karen kind of spoke about that, too. I think that we don't understand, I think that we have no idea what this, what the interaction, you know, we talked last time about, you know, Dale and I tried, you know, Dale and I wanted to do some really basic stuff about sort of solving the problem, where the state law is sort of at odds with our city codes, and I think we don't really know what all that stuff is. And I think it's really important that we figure that stuff out. Nancy talked about public education, and I think that that is pretty much, for me, that's pretty much at the top of the list. Even I, you know, I struggle with getting through the staff report and trying to understand how the different parts of state law sort of interact with themselves, much less with us, and whether we're in the wildlife urban interface zone, or we're in the very high fire severity zone, and what all that means. And I think it's really important that we, you know, that we communicate to the public in as good a way as we can, over and over and over again, about what's required, what the law requires, what we're going to do, what they should do, and whatnot. You know, Karen said, "You're only as safe as your neighbor," and while I think that that's a little bit true, I think that that focuses our energies outward, I think that focuses homeowners' energies outward towards their neighbors, rather than inward, towards their own home. And I think, you know, we talked in my house about, you know, we had the inspection, and we have walked around our house and are trying to figure out which pieces of shrubbery, not groups of shrubbery, but pieces of shrubbery, need to go, and which ones can stay, and how dangerous things are. And I think there's a lot of demand, certainly in my house and among my neighbors, for what people can do themselves. And I think we have sort of fallen, you know, we haven't fallen short of anything yet, because we haven't been tasked with doing anything. But I think it's important to not only take the codes and tell people what they have to do, but tell people what they should do if they're interested in hardening their homes. I think that that stuff is really, really important. And I don't, you know, the firestorms that we've seen, and, you know, obviously, the firestorms that we saw in Pacific Palisades, you know, we get winds here in the winter, and it's not firestorm weather. And so I think that the state knows something, you know, when the state put these maps together, I think the state knows something that maybe we don't fully understand. And we should really work, I think we should really work on getting people, allowing people, or empowering people, or giving people the knowledge to make their own homes safe. You know, Nancy talked about metal roofs, but, you know, we've had a couple of metal roofs come up as an example, but the state code says that they just have a Class A roof. The state code doesn't say that people need a metal roof. It says that they need a Class A roof, and I think that that's an example of how our design guidelines, you know, sort of interact with the state, and I still don't think we understand that. So in addition to all that, finally, you know, there's another ad hoc group, and I think Alessandra and I have sort of spoken about the proliferation of ad hoc groups and doing this work. And I think this work is, honestly, I think this work is too important for an ad hoc committee. I think this work needs to be done by the whole council. And I think we need to sort of task, you know, staff is tasked, we have a professional staff. You know, I think that that work needs to be elevated to all of us, and it needs to be done in public. I think there's going to be a huge public outcry in terms of what we're required to do. I think that's going to become evident, and I think that doing that work in public by the entire council is the way to sort of give people the assurances that we're, you know, that we believe what we believe. And I would ask, you know, that if you are going to have, you know, we did this with the housing element, and I would ask that if you're going to have public meetings of the ad hoc group, that you notice them as city council meetings, so that all of us can participate at the meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Hans?
Yeah, I think there's a lot to work through here. Yeah, I think there's a lot to work through here, right? And that's, you know, all these new rules. You know, I think we need to find a, a solution that balances safety with, you know, the obvious character impacts. And it does need to be a community-driven process. You know, we did have our first meeting of the wildfire preparedness committee a couple of weeks ago. We had the fire chief, we had the chairs of the forest and beach and planning commissions, the city administrator. We do have this meeting tomorrow, where we're going to go to Pescadero Canyon and Mission Trail. And, you know, we're actually going to meet with both the fire chief and, I believe, the, the brush and fire fuels expert that they have, which I'm excited about, and just kind of get eyes on the situation and brainstorm, you know, what can we do to, to make ourselves safer. And it's really the kind of questions that Karen Ferlito was talking about, right? There's a power line going through here, right? What can we do on this hillside to, you know, reduce fire risk? And so those are some of the, the questions. You know, it's, it's still, it's still a bit in COA, but the, you know, the kind of initial goals that we talked about were, you know, to educate ourselves and the community about wildfire risks and preparedness. And, you know, Jeff mentioned, you know, public education. I completely agree that that's very important. And then, secondly, to develop a project plan to ensure that all of the key questions relating to wildfire preparedness are, you know, being proactively analyzed and addressed, you know, and then sort of, you know, subbing that out to the, the relevant body, right? Like, what does the council need to look at? What does the forest and beach commission need to look at? What does the planning commission need to look at? What is the plan, right? And I think that's kind of what Nancy was, was getting at. You know, we've got to look at our high-risk areas, we've got to look at reconciling our rules and regs with, you know, all of these new mandates. We've got to think about our emergency response. You know, and so Nancy was talking about, feels like there's a lot of gaps, you know, trying to understand what's going to happen with the planning rules. And I think part of the goal of this was to, to kind of quarterback all of these issues, because they do touch on, you know, so many different facets of, of city government. I think that meetings should totally be public. I think that's absolutely true. And that's something that, that I'm going to push for, and I think noticing them so that anybody can go is, is a great idea. I do think that there's value in having a committee that's solely focused on this issue, because like we talked about, it really does touch on so many aspects of, of, you know, what's going on here with the city. So, you know, more to come, but I think that we are off to a good start. You know, I think that, one last thing I would say is, you know, I think wildfire preparedness is an issue that hasn't gotten a ton of publicity, you know, from prior councils. And, you know, I think that Chip has done things over the years, kind of on his own initiative, behind the scenes, to make us safer, in addition to residents like friends of Mission Trail. So thank you for that. At the same time, I think that there are limits to what you can do without the full weight of the council, and I think that that's what's needed at this point, right? We really have to, you know, kind of bird dog this and make sure that we, that we run it to ground, so.
I have very little to add. I mean, you know, I think Jeff enumerated and elaborated just a lot of the unknowns with this, and that there's just, there's a mismatch between, surprisingly, what Sacramento thinks we need to do and what actually makes sense. And so that's a list of questions. And what I heard from Hans is that the task force has formed, and is really, is going about starting to answer, ask and answer those questions, and turn what is, at this point, just sort of a chaotic bunch of rules into something that's more meaningful and useful for us. I fully support the task force idea for now. I mean, I, I like divide and conquer, and I really like that you've included Kelly and Michael LePage on this. Those, those are strong citizens, and I, I think having new energy involved is, is a good thing. So I'm, I'm supportive of that. Ultimately, it all has to come back here, and, and the full city council does have to deal with it. But I'm, I'm completely fine with the task force working on this until that time. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to touch upon what everyone has been saying, it's the state. And once again, I don't like the state's heavy-handed approach and the one-size-fits-all, the way they treat all communities up and down the state. It, it is a loss of control, and it's a potential loss of our village character, and that's why it's so important, the group that's formed and, and how we keep the public informed at every step of the way of, of what we're, we're doing. And I just also feel that we're being rushed into this by the state, and we haven't really thought through the consequences and the repercussions of what may come, especially regarding trees and landscaping. You know, as we all know, we're a village in a forest, and there seems to be some of the blaming of the trees. When, when the issue is water, there was actually an excellent letter to the editor in the May 23rd, Pinecone. I just encourage everyone to read that. And tying in with that, another thing I hope the work group can do, and we all can become better informed, is there are brand-new ideas and products out there, and there are ways people can make their homes safer, whether it's like an outdoor home sprinkler system that you can use. There's some safer biodegradable products you could put on your home, I mean in case, you know, worst-case scenario. There's even, we got, someone sent us an email about some kind of like metal foil covering something you can do. I mean, there are things out there that we can do in addition to help keep us safe, and whatever works for, you know, each individual. But I think this all needs to be part of the discussion, and I think we just need to be very careful and thoughtful in everything we do, and, and have that balance, as Hans said, between safety and, and maintaining our character, because this potentially could have a very major impact on it, and certainly in the future to come.
Okay, thank you. I think on this item, we need to make a motion.
Mayor, you should start by asking me to read the title.
Could you read the title?
Yes, I can do that. This is ordinance number 2025-002, Adornance of the City Council of the City of Carmel by the Sea, amending Carmel Municipal Code Section 1508010 and Section 1510020 to adopt the 2025 Fire Hazard Severity Map for the city as identified by the California State Fire Marshal in accordance with Government Code Section 51178. And then, for the balance of the actions, we have Slide 7, which is before the council, a motion could be made to approve the actions recommended.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Roll call.
I have a, I have a question.
Go ahead.
How do we find the action statutorily exempt from sequestration? Do we just need to say those words?
You, you can, yes. And the basis for that is in the staff report.
But do they need to be like, what does the motion need to say to--
The motion, a motion is sufficient to just say moving the recommended action.
So the, the reason, I'm sorry, the reason I'm asking is, the recommended action in the staff report does not include that line?
It, it does on the Slide 7.
Okay.
That's why I said, let's, let's move the recommended actions on Slide 7.
There's a recital in the ordinance itself, sir, that, that references the statutory exemption.
Okay. All right, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Byrne?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delphes?
Yes.
Councilmember Dramoff?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move to item number four, First Reading and Introduction of Ordinance Number 2025003, Adding Section 2.52.686, Paid Parental Leave to the Carmel by the Sea Municipal Code. And this is estimated at 20 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I don't have a PowerPoint for you. I'm going to save you a PowerPoint, because this is pretty self-explanatory, and I'm just going to talk to you. So I'm coming to you with an ordinance, First Reading, for an employee benefit, which would allow time for employees to bond with newborns, adopted children, or fostered children. It's known as paid parental leave. In city administration, we're always thinking of ways to attract new talent and keep them here. It's a big thing for us, building that bench, strength for our future city, having a sustainable workforce, meaning that they're here for a long time, and diversifying the, the age and experience of professionals that we have here in the city. That's a big deal. So highlights of the program, they're listed in the staff report, but some of the bigger highlights. I have to be here 12 months to qualify. You have to have a qualifying event, meaning the birth of a child, adoption of a child, or foster placement of a child. The program, the big, the big thing is it's six weeks of paid leave over a 12-month rolling period, so every 12 months, someone would be eligible for that. It's not a cash-out value. We all, as employees, get vacation time. We can cash that out when we retire or leave or whatever. This is not a cash-out benefit. This is just, if it's, if it's needed, it's a benefit that's available to the employees. One of the benefits, you know, I talked about, you know, the, the city administration looking for ways to keep and attract talent. We would be the only city in our peninsula region that offers this benefit. I think that gives, would give us a unique competitive advantage with our comparable agencies. We talk all the time during union negotiations of how we stack up against our comparable agencies on the peninsula. This would give us a distinct advantage outside of our typical sort of like total compensation conversation. We are seeking to codify this. A lot of these types of benefits you'll see in MOUs. We feel strongly enough about this that we, we think it belongs in our personnel section of our, of our code, which is that Chapter 2. So we are seeking to codify this, that it means it would not be in an MOU. It shows that proactive action by the city to, to recruit and retain talent. In, in the staff report, I mentioned the cost. This is estimated cost. Obviously, it's based on what, what people make. But if, if one employee used it once a year, it'd be roughly about $15,000. That's if someone uses it. Again, this is not a cash-out value. It's only if it gets used. So in conclusion, I just, I just want to reiterate that, you know, we, as the city administration, believe that this is a real, serious, vital benefit, not only to our current employees, but something that we can use to, to sell and celebrate the city, to enhance our recruitment of new employees. So with that, we're recommending, just like at the past, the last ordinance, request the city attorney to read the ordinance, introduce the ordinance and wait for the reading, and then schedule it for your next meeting in July for a second reading and adoption. Available for questions.
All right. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. So what's our current, I mean, do we have maternity leave at this point?
We, we only use Family Medical Leave Act, which is a law that requires a city to hold the seat. We don't pay any money. There's no benefits. They don't lose their job, essentially. That's, that's, that's a law, though.
Okay. So people use sick leave, sir, when they have a, you know, adoption or a birth of a child?
I'm sorry?
They use a combination of sick and vacation leave upon the birth of a child. So before you move into FMLA, you have to exhaust your leave bank. So people typically use their leave banks.
Has the topic come up with the union?
It's been, it's been at the bargaining table throughout the years. It's, it's nothing that's ever made it through the bargaining conversation. And so, like I said, the city administration, we feel strongly about this, just doing it on our own, essentially.
Have we, I guess, I'm, I'm not skilled with union negotiation, maybe, but I would have thought that if you give something, you get something. And do we have a history of kind of doing this, just giving without asking for something in return from a union?
I, I mean, I'm going to answer that if it's okay, Chip.
Sure.
You know, I don't look at this as any sort of negotiation with the union. I look at this as a tool for us, as city administrators, to recruit different talent that we're not currently getting access to. That, that's my honest answer to your question. I don't look at this as anything to do with the union. This is the city doing something.
Did you leave the, the sentence in, Mr. Swanson?
I did not.
Okay, can you, can you, can you share that sentence with, for the benefit of the council, please?
I think I, I think I got there, and I'm going to, I'm going to tread lightly on it, but there was, this has come up in the bargaining tables previously, and it was, it was a benefit that didn't make it to the end, perhaps because whether or not the union, how it aligned with total compensation, you know, I've kind of alluded to that earlier. But we, we feel like it's important at the city to, to add this as a benefit for our employees.
Is it male and female? Parental, so either the male gets up if this wife has a baby.
I had a--
Yes, I want that declared for votes. Are the male gets--
Okay. I, I had a question for you, Brandon. And, you know, so when my wife, when my wife was pregnant, she works for a large tech company, but when she was pregnant, she, so in the state of California, you, you can get, it's under the Short Term Disability Insurance Program, which is, was sort of administered by the EDD Department, which is kind of like working with the, the DMV to get your paychecks. It's really fun. But she got 60% of her salary four weeks before her due date, and then eight weeks after childbirth. And then her employer covered the remaining 40% of her salary, you know, during those, those 12 weeks. And then they opted in to provide another eight weeks after that. So it was like a 60-40 split for 12 weeks, and then the employer was 100% after eight. But can you, for the benefit of the public, can you explain why, you know, city employees here do not qualify for those state benefits? And can you just kind of explain to the public why that is?
Sure. I'm actually going to let Marissa speak to that, who's much smarter about these things than I am.
I was prepared for this, but I can answer the question. It's not that they don't qualify. Public agencies are not required to pay into SDI, essentially. So it, it's a choice for, for bargaining units to opt into it, and it's a choice for employees to choose to opt into it. But if they don't, then it's not available for them.
You said employers, right? Employers--
Employees.
My understanding was that this individual employee could not opt into the SDI benefits, that it had to be done at the kind of agency level--
They have to do it at the collective bargaining unit, as a collective bargaining unit. That's, that's where it happens. That's where they would opt into it.
And that's where it's gotten stuck, Mr. Booter, because there were people, perhaps, in the bargaining units that would like to pay into it, to enjoy that benefit, when and if they had children, and there are other members of the bargaining unit who said, "I'm never going to have children, so I don't want to be obligated to pay into this program." So again, it's not by individual, it's--
Right, it's not by individual, right? Yeah, it's not by individual, it's group.
Yes, sir.
So it's either all or none?
Right, okay.
Did Hans receive--
Wait, Donna, 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 wait, just wait. You can ask that question in a minute. Do you have anything, Jeff?
I do not have any. I have some comments, but no questions.
Okay. All right, we'll open it up to the public. Go ahead, Donna. You can come up and say anything you want for three minutes.
It's my understanding that many men take off when their wife has a baby. And many men can take off if they decide to be a father. So my question is, you know, parental means either parent or both parents. If they both worked for the city, they both get off for six weeks. So I don't think there's a discussion, other than it's a good idea, and, and I had children, and I used my vacation leave for a leave. So they didn't have it then, which was fine. I was happy I saved vacation. But parental is for either parent, no matter who has the baby, or how they got the baby. That's my comment on this discussion. So I think it's a good idea. We don't have that many employees. I don't think there's a big baby boon going on. In fact, California has lost in population, has the Carmel schools have also. So I don't think you're going to lose a whole lot of money on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Is there anybody online?
I'm sure there's a lot of them.
This is a public comment hour time.
Well, what about the rest of the council?
We already had our questions.
Okay, I'll ask some questions. I'm just curious.
We'll make comments after you're finished, Maria.
No, I just have a question out of more curiosity. I understand what Chip, what you just said about people opting in as a group, and if not, nobody gets it. Is it everybody does it, or nobody gets it? But let me ask you this. There's, right now, do our employees have any kind of leave separate from the FMLA, which is a standard by law, that you get 12 weeks based on non-paid leave, and you have your vacation? Is there any other leave for having a baby, like we all did? We all had your short-term disability, your vacation, and then your companies will pay you full-time, and then you do FMLA. There's nothing like that? Can you explain that to the public? Because it seems that this is a no-brainer to give if that was to be the case.
If that's your-- If that's your only question, we'll answer it after you're finished.
Okay. Yeah, that will be my only question. But I think my comment then, to add to that, is I think we ought to be given this, especially because there are not a lot of benefits for people to have children or adopt or anything. So, I think we should go ahead and do it.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Do you want to answer a question?
Yes, sir, thank you. So, when someone has a child, is respecting a child, they use their existing leave banks, Ms. Ruse? So, they use their vacation leave bank, their compensatory, whatever that's called, their accumulated leave, or their vacation leave, before, during, or after childbirth or adoption. And it is unisex, so it's paternal and maternal, and so it can be used by anybody.
All right.
And sorry, one more thing. And so then, after a leave bank is exhausted currently with the city, then their employment, as Ms. Bermuda said, is protected, their seat, their position is protected under the fair, that's the one, FMLA. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Bring it back for comments. I know you're ready for one.
You have a question that came up. So, I'm looking at Exhibit A in the ordinance. So, I just ask my questions based on the number, the letter in the ordinance. So, number C says paid parental leave shall be taken consecutively or intermittently, blah, 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 blah. I don't understand what it means that, now I don't understand what it means, that it says this leaves are run concurrently with FMLA, CFRA, and subjects to the same. What does it mean that it runs concurrently? Don't they address, like, how this leave addresses pay, and the FMLA leave addresses only that you have your job? Right? So, what is it? Why are we talking about FMLA in this ordinance?
Because someone could have exhausted their leave bank, and that kicks them into FMLA, but with this ordinance, the council would be creating paid parental leave. And again, the FMLA is based on exhaustion of your leave bank. So, that's why you can have the city's proposed program running concurrently with FMLA protection for that person in their position.
So, how much FMLA does an employee get? Would you say 90 days?
12 weeks.
12 weeks, so 84 days. So, someone's going to get 12 weeks of FMLA and six weeks, according to this ordinance, six weeks of paid parental leave, PPL. And so, what this, what C is based...
Maybe Ms. Bermuda can answer that.
So, what that means is that we're not creating a whole new leave outside of FMLA and CFRA. FMLA and CFRA are the same thing. FMLA is under the federal government, CFRA is under the state of California. So, we're not creating anything outside of these legally, leaves, legal leaves, right? We're just creating a parental leave that runs at the same time that these both, that these leaves that exist run. It just provides pay during that leave, because right now, during those leaves, employees are required to use their personal leaves to cover those 12 weeks. So, what this policy does is it provides six weeks paid during that same period of time, leaving then another six weeks for them to use their own leaves. So, it's not a leave outside of FMLA and CFRA necessarily. It's simply providing six paid leaves within those existing...
12 weeks.
12 weeks.
And it's concurrent with, not sequential, too?
Right. And it's not intended to extend the leave in any way. It's only intended to cover pay. Not all employees carry leaves enough to cover those six weeks. You know, sometimes people have less than that. So, this is just intended to provide pay.
Okay. Okay. I reserve the right to make a comment on that later, but I'll need to think about it for a minute. Don't go away. Section F, PPL, PPL shall be reduced by any payment received, yada, yada, yada. So, this seemed like, I read this, and this is, this sounds like, and word salad isn't the right, is not the right answer, not the right description. This sounds like, it sounds like a really complicated thing that doesn't really say a lot. And so, I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out why Section F is in there.
The reason Section F is in there is because there was an attempt last year for employees to opt into state disability insurance. They declined to do that. So...
What does that mean? Describe, like, an attempt here?
So, state disability is required for everybody in the private sector.
Right.
Not for public agencies. Okay? It's optional for them. If they don't opt in, they don't pay into it, and they do not receive the benefit. So, because they've opted out, right, historically, which is why nobody has it in Carmel, this section was put into the policy in case that at some point, the units, or the bargaining units, opt into it, then SDI reduces the amount of time that the city pays during those six weeks, because that's essentially how SDI works with FMLA and CFRA exist right now. That's how it works.
So, our position, like, okay, so the council's position could be that we're going to supply, so alternate wording of paragraph F could be that, alternate wording and alternate meaning of paragraph F could mean that, could say that we're going to supply six weeks of paid parental leave, and if they have opted into SDI, they get six weeks and SDI. Right? Like, why would we not do that? Like, could we do that?
We're talking about the same period of time. So, all that says is that...
Well, we're not because, sorry, we're not because FMLA talks about 12 weeks, right? And SDI is, how many weeks of SDI would they get?
I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, I don't know off the top of my head.
It's four weeks before, and then it's eight weeks after, it's a cesarean, and six weeks after if it's not cesarean.
It is, I don't know.
Okay. I think that's, I think that that's...
Yeah, I don't want to quote that, because I don't know off the top of my head, but SDI covers a chunk of pregnancy leave, essentially. And it could cover more, I don't, this is too much details, but it could cover more if there's pregnancy disability, which is maybe what Councilmember Booter is referring to, if there's pregnancy disability before the childbirth. So, that leave is potentially extended. All we're talking about here is once, you know, there's a baby born, and this is bonding time, FMLA, CFRA time.
So, we're talking about basically six weeks of pay during...
I don't remember...
That's rough wording, that's mine.
I don't remember how far SDI goes, but we're talking about the same period of time. So, if SDI is adopted at some point down the road, the way SDI works with FMLA should still be applied at that time. So, it would reduce the amount that the city would pay out, essentially, because it's coordinated.
It would end up more like the arrangement...
It would end up being more like SDI.
Like Hans's wife.
Yes. And that's why this is here, because we don't want to ignore the fact that, we don't want to overpay anybody. This is not intended to provide more pay than an employee normally receives. So, there would be coordination.
Thank you. So, my question is, is there a way to, rather than simply not paying PPL, sorry about all the acronyms, instead of not paying PPL, is there a way to, so instead of cutting PPL off, if the employees eventually, at some point in the future, adopt SDI, is there a way to use PPL to extend the pay that SDI grants to employees?
It's not intended to, and it doesn't work that way.
Right. I'm not asking, I understand the way it's written.
Okay.
I understand that it's written, sorry, I'm not.
No, no.
I understand that it's written not intended to, but my question is, could it be written to intend to, like, would it make any point? Would it make a difference? Is it possible to extend the pay provided by SDI for six weeks? Like, I know that it's not written that way. I got it.
Yeah, I mean, council has that choice. If council wanted to extend it beyond that, but yeah, it would be simply a more generous policy.
Okay. So, I'm thinking about that, and I'll wait for discussion on that, but I have one more thing, one more comment. Section G, the city administrator has discretion to terminate this policy anytime. That doesn't make any sense to me. Like, I really don't have any interest, with all respect, to you. I don't have any interest in passing a law that you can nullify by edict. Like, that's what that says to me. What? Maybe we should replace, the city attorney has the discretion.
Maybe we just delete Section G.
So, my, so I think the other, thank you very much. I think that F is worth talking about if we decide to go down. I'm sort of okay with my comments on C, but I really think we should, if we're going to go down this road, we should really delete G. Like, that does make a sense to me.
Okay. Hans, do you have anything?
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, I recently went through this, so it's important to me. I don't think that society does enough to help young parents. You know, as a city, we currently offer no, you know, family leave benefits at all, and, you know, we've literally been having employees drain their sick days and vacation days, and then say, "Hey, go unpaid." I mean, I was pretty shocked when I first heard that, you know, without trying to blow anybody's spot. I mean, we have a, we have a city employee who's pregnant right now, right? And, you know, and these are, these are real, real issues. You know, I think that this proposal is a good start, and I commend, you know, the city leadership for, you know, for putting this together. You know, I still think, like, six weeks, I know you went out and you tried to look at comps, I still think, like, six weeks feels like a little bit short to me. You know, I don't think putting, like, a six-week-old in daycare is, like, good for the kid or good for society. I would sort of prefer to mirror the state of California timeline. You know, I think 12 weeks for somebody who is, like, giving birth, like, if a woman's giving birth, I think that that, you know, could feel okay. It's actually 10 weeks if it's, you know, a traditional delivery, and 12 weeks if it's a cesarean. I think that that could work, and then eight weeks if you're not giving birth, like a dad, for example, or, you know, if you're adopting a child. So, again, I think mirroring the state of California benefits would, I would prefer that. You know, I completely agree on item G. I think that's a great, that's a great catch. So, I think I'd probably get rid of that, or at least the ability to terminate it. Item F, item F, I completely agree with Jeff's comments. I mean, basically, what you have is a situation where the city has said, "Hey, we're going to pay for six weeks of paid family leave," and then we're required to offer 12 weeks under FMLA. And if the employees opted into, you know, SDI, I think what I would prefer is that, you know, under SDI, it's like 60 or 70% is covered, and I think what I would prefer to do is just, you know, you've got to use those, those benefits get used first, and then the amount of money, those six weeks, would just fill in the gaps, like the remaining 40% for the initial period of time. And then whatever the residual is, I sort of did some calculations, whatever the residual is, you just tack that on to the end, because we're spending the same amount of money we were going to spend anyway, and they're guaranteed to be able to be out of the chair for 12 weeks if they want to. So, like, nothing has changed, right? So, that's sort of how I would think about that. But, yeah, I'm really glad we're doing this, because it just, it just feels terrible that for 100-plus years, this has been the way this has happened. I mean, just think about that. It's really, really crazy.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah. So, the hard ass in me kind of says, if you choose to be unionized and be represented, then those who represent you should be representing you well enough to get you maternity parental leave. So, that's the hard ass in me, but I'm not a very good hard ass, so. I'm supportive of this, and I think, actually, what Hans just said is clever for F. It's sort of like we're trying to future-proof ourselves against the adoption of SDI by the bargaining unit. And if that bargaining unit someday has the wisdom to go with SDI, I would be okay with essentially extending the six weeks to the value of whatever that SDI is. That, it's not, I'm not looking to spend less. I hope that doesn't appear in the paper tomorrow. But, yeah, I mean, if we're going to prove six weeks, I'm prepared to pay for six weeks, and if some other entity takes an action that gives our employees even more than six weeks, I'm supportive of that. So, I would reword F, and maybe I'd just delete it, or I would even say, PPL shall not be reduced by any payment received. So, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Alessandra?
Thank you, Mayor. I support it. I think it's a good thing to do. I think it's good to start with the six weeks, and we can certainly revisit it in the future if we want to extend it, especially since we're the only city doing it. I think we can, you know, start off with the six weeks. On item G, perhaps we could just add, the city administrator can revise it or terminate, but upon advice of city council, so that way, at least, we have a say in the policy, rather than him unilaterally making those changes.
All right, thanks. I'll agree with that one. In general, I sort of feel like Jeff's comment when we were doing the Torres and Fifth House, which stairways have been put in, by the way, you should take a look at them, when Jeff said, "I feel like we're becoming a landscaping company. I feel like we're becoming an HR consulting company." Although the comments are really good, I tend to think that we have a competent HR department, and we should probably go with what they think is best practices, and will accomplish what they're trying to do, which is employee retention. But if they think that some of the comments are worthwhile and can be embedded in this because they're good, then I recommend that they do that. So, that's my comment, and I think this is a good thing. I think everybody thought it was a good thing, right? So, you got a positive comment, and now I think we need to redo the reading, and...
Mayor, respectfully, I would ask, though, because how it works with respect to Section F, I would respectfully request some sort of thumbs up, thumbs down from council, because I heard various versions, if we want to essentially do the city's initial proposal of six months of PPL, and then if someone, to use Councilmember Del's analogy, if someone else ponies up six months, essentially...
Six weeks.
Six, sorry, six weeks to a whole year, six weeks and six weeks. If someone else ponies up an additional six weeks, then it would be additive to what the city's doing. So, that's the important thing that I need to get for the ordinance. So, what I heard was, and correct me if I'm wrong, was Councilmember Barron was in line with that, was okay with that approach. Councilmember Booter was okay with that. Councilmember Del was okay with that. So, I had three yeses on that.
I defer to you as to best practices.
That's one we need direction from you guys. That has...
If you think you have three, I don't...
Okay, thank you. Sorry to press in on that. I didn't want to leave without...
I think you've got three. I think you've got three for that.
Well, I think I need a little clarity on this.
Okay, go ahead.
So, forgive me for being a lawyer, but in Section F, what I heard the change was being suggested, which was that PPL shall not be reduced by any payment received. So, I heard, at least, that's what I heard Councilmember Del say. So, if that's going to be the change that the council agrees to, or is somebody else suggesting a different change?
So, I still have a couple of things, like...
Can I just address that point before you address your point?
Sure.
On that point, I just think that it is a little bit, and I don't mean this in a bad way, it's just a little bit clumsily constructed. I think that we could be more specific about what are we proposing here? And so, I would urge staff to go back and just add the specificity of how you envision it working out.
Rather than...
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to read the first reading?
Yeah, let's bring it back.
Okay. So, my, okay, so my other, my comment was, I'm in agreement with Hans that six weeks seems like not enough. You know, I've heard, I've heard a little bit of pushback on that, but I would, six weeks seems like, seems short to me. And...
All right. You think it's short?
You know, I think it's... You know, I think it's short, and, you know, I'm with Hans. I think we should have 12 weeks, but I'd be willing to settle for less.
The only thing I would add is, I think when you think about collectively bargaining this, like, 85, 90% of the people are, like, past childbearing age or aren't a woman, and so, like, it's going to be really hard for you to bargain this collectively. So, I think, that's just, anyway, I just want to throw that out there.
Yeah. You know, the, the staff report made it clear that the financial impact is pretty minimal in terms of the projected impact over the next 12 months, for sure. So, uh, do you have...
Could I make a, do we need a motion on this?
Yep. Go ahead.
What about...
If we're going to bring it back...
We have to read. He has to read.
Well, if we're bringing it back, I, I think this language is, is too intense for us to try to amend on the dais. So, we've heard what you said. We'll come back with the revised version in July.
Okay.
So, I don't think we need anything more formal.
Do you still need to read?
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking to see if there's any, if there's any other takers on a, on a...
Longer.
Longer term.
I, I take HR's advice. That's what they're in business to do. They think this is, if they think this is what's needed, then I think it's good.
We did a research in this with...
She's got to come to the mic.
Yeah. Come, come up.
So, we surveyed, um, you know, all these agencies from Silicon Valley to mostly, mostly the Bay Area who offer these policies, and, um, they were all over the place. Some of them required that employees exhaust all their leaves before a parental leave paid starts. Some of them had four weeks. Some of them had six weeks. Some had eight. So, we just picked, you know, sort of the middle of the road on it. That's how we came up with that. So, it was kind of an average from everything we surveyed.
I'm going to take a quick survey. How many people think it should be eight? How many people think it should be six?
Six. Let's do six. Let's do six first. Six.
Yeah, we do six first?
Yeah.
Six.
Seven?
I can go for eight.
Eight?
I'll go for eight.
Okay. You've got your advice.
Get some voters in the audience, too, so thank you.
All right. Well, that's, that's good. Okay. Are we ready to move forward now?
Not quite.
What about section G?
Yeah. Well, section, section G, I heard at least two council members, the mayor and a council member, say, add to the end of it, subject to approval by the city council. We could either do that, or we delete G.
I, I'm for deletion.
Deletion.
Okay.
It just sort of makes it, get rid of it.
All right.
It weakens it too much for you.
And I have one more question. On F, where is the majority of the council on F? Is it two? Well, I don't want to try and rephrase what Eric said, I heard a bunch of different things. So, maybe one, at least one council member can say, say what they think F should read, and we can see if we've got a majority.
Yeah. I have notes.
Yeah. On F? I think, I think you have.
If I could, I'm so sorry, council. The, the one part that we, we would recommend is your, your HR team to leave in F. You can strike out, taking away Chip's authority, totally happy with that, to, to terminate it. But, we do need the city administrator to have authority to interpret the rule, because that's a big part of what the city administrator does when it comes to grievances and things like that. So, we would ask you to just leave that part of that language in, strike everything out. We'll be happy. Please.
Okay.
Okay. Now, on to F. Since I, I mean, my notes show there were different comments by different council members, can I ask for a volunteer on the council to, to explain what their position is, and we can see if a majority of the council agrees with that?
My, my position before, we might say eight weeks, but I think it's still my position, is, um, that we will pay up to eight weeks. And if some other funding source, like SDI, becomes available and that actually extends the paternal leave, um, for up to, that could be another, that doesn't matter how long it is, but my guess is another four or five weeks, which I think is about where I'd like to end up in it someday anyway. So, um, essentially, I'm saying that, it's what I said, PPL shall not be reduced by that payment, but I think the wording needs to be thought through.
Can we see a majority?
Yeah. I think also that Hans made the point that, I think it was Hans, made the point that if SDI pays, like, 60% of the salary, so, let's say SDI pays 60% of the salary for six weeks, we would pay 40% of the salary, 40% of the salary for those six weeks, and then we would extend our PPL for the balance of whatever they have remaining.
The SDI would have, okay. But, we can write it back.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understood, too. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So, do we need to do the reading now? You're going to come back with a fresh one?
No. No reading is necessary. We'll just, we'll just come back.
Okay. All right. That was more than 20 minutes, but it was definitely thorough and exhaustive. And, and, and thank you.
It's only 30.
And thank you for your concern for our, our employees. I mean, it's, it's...
Thank you.
It's nice.
54 minutes till, till curfew.
All right. So, uh, we're now up to orders of business, and number five...
64 minutes.
64 minutes till curfew.
Uh, resolution 2025-054 approving a 4.19% rate increase to charges by the city's franchise Holler Greenwaste Recovery. I'll stop there.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. So, before you tonight are two parts. One of them is a rate increase, and the other part is an amendment to the MOU. And, um, so, in 2014, uh, the, the council approved a 15-year agreement with Greenwaste that expires in 2030. The agreement allows for annual rate increases. Uh, the cost of disposal and processing at regen, it includes the cost of disposal and processing at regen, and it also includes inflationary adjustments to the labor and operating costs with Greenwaste. The franchise fee of 13% is included in, in this amount. HF&amp;H reviewed Greenwaste's request for the adjustment, and it resulted in a 4.19% increase. And, uh, originally, Greenwaste estimated that the increase was going to be 2.74%, but after HF&amp;H went through everything, they increased it up to 4.19. The current rate for a residential 32-gallon bin is $53.78, and with this increase, it'll go up to $56.03, which is $2.25 increase this year. So, last year, the council had approved a 3.59% rate increase. In November, CalRecycle had issued new regulations to implement SB 1383 that is, has goals to reduce the amount of organic materials that are in the landfill by 75% by, actually, this year, 2025. The technical advisor, advisory committee for regen is working together to implement the program to meet all of these goals. And, um, there's been an MOU update for the regional implementation costs, and Carmel's cost is, um, 14, or $14,213. And it's covered as part of the Public Works operating budget. City staff coordinates with Greenwaste on the implementation locally for outreach for noncompliant residential and commercial accounts and implementation of the waiver system. This fiscal year, there have been 23 waivers that have been approved and 10 that have either been denied or that they added service. And also, the city and Greenwaste are working with four outstanding sites. So, we, we basically have four left that haven't added organics or applied for a waiver. So, tonight, our recommendation is to approve the rate increase and also to approve the amendment number four. We have a very, we, Jose Ortiz is a general manager for Greenwaste, and he's here in the audience today. And we also, I believe Dave Hilton is still, um, on, on site, or on, uh, the virtual, and he's with HF&amp;H Consultants, and they're both available to answer any questions, and I'm available as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just, one, thank you, Mayor. If I can just add one thing, sir. Um, so, we, we do get, um, you know, it's a 100-year-old city. A lot of our buildings are 100 years old. That means the kitchens and the restaurants are 100 years old. So, the 10 waivers that you saw on Mayor, Mayor's previous slide is, is usually based on the fact that there's just no room for an organics recycling bin facility. So, and we find that when, when you hear from COD as well, when we talk about grease separators versus, uh, you know, grease processing, it's, it's often the same challenge. So, again, um, some of the waivers have been approved, but some are not, and we, we try to work with the, with the restaurateurs to ensure that they can comply with SB 1383. So, just wanted to add that.
And an additional thing, too, is we just recently had worked with HF&amp;H and Greenwaste to add an additional smaller organics bin, because, uh, previously, the option was only to have a large bin, and so, we, we asked them to include a 32-gallon bin, which, um, I think a lot of the, the commercial district would, would like to do that.
Thank you, Mary.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any questions? No questions? Do we have any public comments? No public comments. We'll bring it back for discussion. Anybody have a comment? I don't think so. No. Any, any comments? Discussion?
I move to approve.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Councilmember Booter?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Delve?
Yes.
Councilmember Jarmov?
Yes.
Mayor Byrne?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We should celebrate that. Never happened before.
We've got 20 minutes back there. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Future agenda items. Future agenda items.
Future agenda item.
Right. Right. Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to move on to that.
Oh, okay.
We've got two more things left for us. Uh, so, we've got future agenda items. Uh, first, we'll start with the council. If anybody has anything they'd like to add.
Uh, sure. I was wondering if we could, um, add looking into the city purchasing, uh, the strip of land just south of the Frank Lloyd Wright House. It's actually in the county that's for sale right now.
All right.
I'd support that.
All right.
I do not support it.
It's up to you, Dale.
I'm willing to discuss it. It sounds like an interesting thing to do.
So, that'll come back as a closed session item, uh, under the Brown Act. And then, as I had said in my earlier comments, before, uh, the council would be able to take action on, on any acquisition. It would need to be an open session item.
All right.
Can we use a closed session?
Yes. Well, any other...
Sorry. I had a...
I'm not sure that we're done with that.
Yeah.
I think... Hans, do you have something for the future?
Yeah. So, um, I've been having some heartburn about the timing of the ADU ordinance, because we've got a proliferation of ADUs, and I think for character purposes, it's really important that we get some protections in place. And had a chance to talk to Chip and Brandon today, and it sounds like, um, the plan is planning commission in August, and then if...
July.
In July?
Yeah.
Oh. I thought we talked about August and September.
July and August. But, if you want to do it August, September, we can do that, too.
Oh. Well, even better. So, I'll take it. Uh, planning commission in July, and then if it passes without additional modifications asked for by the planning commission, August for the council, which warmed my heart, because I think that that's something that we, we really need.
That was in September. August doesn't happen. September for the council.
Okay. Um, in any case, it's going to happen soon, which I'm excited about.